Call the meeting toward it, please rise. Plaid to the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boss.
Present.
Pipia.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hughes.
Present.
Fry.
Present.
Troller.
Here.
Throm.
Present.
Barnes.
Present.
We have a form.
All right, the first item is approval of minutes. Does anyone have amendments?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Page two, fourth line, should re-stated that decision should be based on facts and not on emotions. Mayor Grund stressed safety concerns and read an email from Dennis about his concerns on three of the holes that Kyle had designed in City Park. CM Boss stated that her safety concerns were not just for players but for all people using the park, such as kids on the playground, campers, and walkers.
All right, is that the only one?
I did have a question about sunflower credit.
Okay.
About, there was an estimate and a motion was made, but no bids were requested.
I think we have the discussion that they submitted it, and so now they were at a disadvantage if we went to bid, go out to bid. I mean, I guess the council could decide to reject it and actually bid it out to several companies.
I did have some contact from citizens about not going out for bids and what our guidelines were.
Well, our policy is anything over $20,000 is supposed to go out to bid. That's our city policy on that. Do you want to bring that up? It doesn't really affect minutes, right?
No.
So we'll bring it up later, and will you bring it up on maybe Streets?
Okay.
Want to bring it up on Streets? So, are there any other amendments?
Madam Mayor, the planning commission update, they're got a wrong address. They're saying Third instead of Eighth Street where it's going to be.
Let's see, let me see if I can find it.
Contact four.
Two oh one, South Eighth. Okay. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
All right. Does anybody else have amendments? I've been entertaining a motion to accept as amended.
Move to approve the minutes of the July 9, 2018 minutes as amended.
Is there a second? Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aidee? We'll go ahead to public comments. I just want to make a comment about videotaping. We do have a policy. It's on the door, the entrance door, and we're just asking you to adhere to that policy that the city currently has. And also, I want to make a comment that all public comments need to be addressed to the governing body as a whole, not individual council members. And the last clarification I want to make, I understand there's been some discussions about standing committees, and standing committees were established January 22 of 2018, all standing committees. So the Finance and Admin Committee was established then as long as, as well as all the others. The Finance and Admin Committee is responsible for policy, contracts, agreements, city code, insurance, and risk management. That is what the Finance and Admin Committee discusses and brings to the council. And regarding the most recent Admin and Finance Committee, the items to discuss were given to City Clerk Debbie Price, and City Clerk Debbie Price issued the call for the meeting, not any member of the governing body. And so it went out just that there was a meeting and it did not list the items to be discussed, but that was her call. With that being said, I would, how many people would like to have public comments tonight? One, two, three, five, six. Okay. Wait, hold on. Did somebody else add a hand? One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, so everybody will have four minutes, so that it will be done in 30 minutes for public comments. So one of you that raised your hand first is welcome to come, and just make sure that you adhere to what has been stated. Thank you.
Absolutely. Hello, Mandy Cook, 2041 North Street, Ward one, Ward one. I'm actually here in representation of the Marysville Public Library. We put Little Free Library up in the park a couple months ago, a month and a half ago, and the council that was, or the, excuse me, the committee that was with us, with me at the time, said that we would try it there for a little bit, and if it wasn't working, then maybe we would move it to another spot. I'm happily able to tell you that it's working wonderfully, so if the council or the committee is willing to go ahead and put that concrete pad there, as we discussed, that would be awesome. My boss and I, Dennis and I, have been, we check it about once every week, and we've noticed not only books being gone, but also books being put back in.
That's a very good thing.
Yes.
That's how it's supposed to work.
It's wonderful. So I just want to let you know. And also, just on a side note, libraries are often under fire as to their relevancy in today's technology age. Just recently, an article was presented in Forbes Magazine that claimed that in order to save taxpayers money, Amazon should replace local libraries. Now, I'm not accusing the governing board nor the Marysville for not respecting libraries, but I just wanted to give you a few facts about libraries. Just in June alone, there were almost 2,000 adult books borrowed. The value of your use in just June is about $33,000. So there's, this will come out, I'm not going to tell you a whole bunch more just because you're going to get a copy of this as we usually do here in the next week or so, but for everything in June that happened, that includes services, that includes classes, that includes things that were checked out, according to the ALA website, the total of the value of your use from the Marysville Public Library in June was $58,799.80. And I think that's pretty awesome, so I just wanted to make sure you knew about it as well.
That's very awesome. Thanks for sharing that.
Absolutely.
Sometimes we forget that.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Mayor, did we already approve the concrete pad, just waiting on her, or do we need to actually move forward and create a motion to pour that pad for the Little Free Library?
Do you know if we?
I'm trying to remember. I remember us talking about it, but I can't remember if we actually approved it.
If there's a consensus, it's not going to happen.
It's good enough to move forward. Okay.
That's under your?
Yes.
So you'll take care of it?
No. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were ready to go.
All right. Someone else that raised their hand is welcome to come forward.
I am here to request to have a beer liquor garden on September 7th and 8th for the Boss Nationals and the Gravel Dash. I'd like to place, I'm getting the bin from Aliargo, and we would like to place it in front of the Marysville Main Street office on the street. And on the 7th, which would be Friday night, we would like to do it from 4:00 to midnight, and on Saturday, the 8th, we would like to do it from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I do have a map, I think I gave Dennis some maps.
Maps.
Of the consumption area.
Consumer chambers.
The consumption area, I believe, is the same as it was for the barbecue.
Is this resolution is what she's referring to? Okay. So laying before you.
Where's the map?
This map? So map is on page eight. The resolution is laying on your desktop. Debbie, you want to go ahead and read that? Just so everyone knows what it says?
The resolution is a resolution temporarily exempting certain portions of the city of Marysville Kansas from the prohibitions on the drinking or consumption of alcoholic liquor and/or cereal malt beverage within the corporate limits of the city of Marysville, Kansas. And then, whereas the Chamber of Commerce is holding a Gravel Dash event, and whereas the Wagon Wheel Restaurant has requested to temporarily extend its premise and serve alcoholic liquor located at 7th and Broadway Streets identified in the attached map and permit authorized by this resolution. And whereas KSA 41-719 in the Marysville City Code, Section 3-303 A and B prohibit the drinking or consumption of alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage on public property within the city. And whereas KSA 41-2645 in the Marysville City Code, Section 3-303 C, authorizes the city of Marysville, Kansas to exempt upon written application specified property from the prohibition on the drinking or consumption of alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage on public property. And whereas this resolution does not authorize the possession or consumption of alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage outside the confines of the event. And whereas the city of Marysville, Kansas desires to temporarily exempt portions of 7th and Broadway Streets as identified in the diagram attached to the permit authorized by this resolution from the above references, references prohibitions on the drinking or consumption of alcoholic liquor and/or cereal malt beverage on public property between the hours of 4:00 p.m. to midnight on Friday, September 7, 2018, and 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 8, 2018, so long as there is strict compliance with the laws and regulations of the state of Kansas, the city of Marysville, Kansas Municipal Code, and the terms and conditions of this resolution, and any temporary permit issued pursuant hereto adopted by the governing body of the city of Marysville this 23rd day of July, signed by the mayor this 23rd day of July.
Do you guys have any questions about that resolution?
Move to approve Resolution 2018-04. Seconded.
And Lori, is that in agreement with what you wanted?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aidee? Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
There were seven hands.
My name is Ariana Miller. My address is 1117 Apartment B, Keating Street, Marysville, Kansas. I am in Ward four. Several months ago, Carla Grund came to my 7th grade English class and talked about what it was like being mayor. I wrote an essay on what I would do if I were mayor and entered in an essay contest. I won in the northeastern part of Kansas going against 7th graders in big cities such as Lawrence, Kansas City, and Topeka. I have done plenty of research about being mayor and other city council subjects. With this knowledge, I feel like I am obligated to voice my opinion to represent the younger generation in our town. I am not usually vocal on community things in fear that I will not be taken seriously since I'm at the young age of 13. However, I am deeply saddened by the amount of negativity our community has. It is sad that I found out about the topic of disc golf in our community through negativity on Facebook. We all can agree that disc golf is a good sport for Marysville, so why don't we get something done about it? We are known as one of the best small towns in Kansas, yet we cannot seem to agree on the decision as a community. The public has voted in favor for disc golf in the city park, yet there are still ongoing issues about it that should not be happening. In my opinion, if you are so sure that it is a bad idea, just let it unfold and let people learn the hard way. However, regardless on the location, there will always be risks, just like there are risks in baseball, softball, basketball, et cetera. Why can't we all come together as a committee and agree on a temporary solution, see how it goes, and see where this takes us? It's childish to keep this going on as there are bigger problems to worry about. For example, poverty in our community, infrastructure maintenance, and a plethora of other things that we can be worrying about rather than disc golf. Just put a temporary disc golf course in the city park for a few months and see how it goes. It will not be the end of the world. Something needs to be done so we can go back to worrying about more important things.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Glenda Eck, home city resident. I would just like to address, as you said that it had to be to everybody, so how many of you actually have played disc golf? Okay, Gina, can you tell me what courses you've played?
Wait, wait, Glenda, the way this works is...
I have the stand right now.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
I am presiding over the meeting, and the way public comments go is that the governing body is not supposed to interact on public comments. You present to us, but we don't interact with you.
I asked that question before of others, and I was told yes, and I've seen it actually happen on the videos of the city council meeting.
But that is not how the governing body handbook reads.
Okay, so what's good for the goose is not good for the gander?
You're welcome to share your public comments with the council.
Okay, my public comment is, right now, as my calendar on my quote says, it's better to keep your mouth shut and let people think you're a fool than open it and remove all doubts. And right now, you look like a fool, because you're not letting me ask the questions that I am asking.
All right.
So, that being said, on May 30, I tried to share with Councilmember Boss and you mayor, the thoughts and positive comments from a former mayor and councilmember of a Kansas community on the safety and the positive aspects that they had in their particular city and of having disc golf in the park. At that point, you looked at my phone, did a couple things, and said, but have you thought about safety? And then you said, did you see the negative comments that Kyle posted about me on Facebook? You already had determined that it was a negative impact.
Okay, Glenda.
And I think that there was apples to oranges versus apples to apples.
Glenda, public comments, according to the city of Marysville, Kansas Governing Body Handbook, is not, if anyone engages in personal attacks on any member of the governing body, it may be necessary for the mayor to cut them off. So, with that being said, if you're going to personally attack any specific member of the governing body, I must cut you off.
Okay, and that is perfectly fine. My question was, have you played disc golf? Three of them rose their hand. I asked the question, which course did you play? Did that negatively imply anything? It was a matter of which course did you play? Okay, is that a negative question?
No, I'm just...
Okay, so that being said, I would like...
But you're not, we're not supposed to engage in public comments, Glenda.
You just said it was not supposed to be negatively addressed to one person.
It's not...
And right now, I addressed it to everybody in the council, and the three that raised their hand, I was going to ask my questions that you...
But that's not how public comments work, Glenda.
Okay, well then, that's...
You must understand city council protocol. We have a code of procedure, public comments, we go according to Kansas Governing Handbook, and public comments are for you to share and for us not to engage in that conversation. That is how it's supposed to be.
So when are we supposed to get answers? As a public...
As a public comment, you're supposed to give us input.
And when do we get to ask questions?
Well, you can call your individual council members at any time.
Unfortunately, I'm not in the city.
Well, you're welcome to contact them anyway.
Okay, and so...
How much time should I have?
No, you've interrupted, so then I should, you've had my four minutes.
It was necessary.
Anyway, back to, you were comparing apples to oranges when you were discussing the acreage, and I think if that was all complied with, then it wouldn't have been such a, as I'm going to say, butthurt for what you guys seem to be going back and forth on. And I really would want to know what the actual safety, specific safety measures are that you have concerns with. No answers because you can't respond. But thank you very much. My four minutes is up, I'm sure. Have a great day.
Just so you know, there's 30 pages about safety concerns in the packet from last week.
Madam Mayor.
But, that being said, were there any positive comments in there? Out of the 30 pages that you responded, two pages were negative safety. Did you also note any positive from the local or area disc parks that told you that they didn't have any concerns with the safety? That those administrators, did you question them whether anybody had physically been hurt that required medical attention?
All right, thanks.
Madam Mayor, we have discussed things with people who've come before us. I think, I understand what policy is, but we've set a pretty hard precedent in the past.
But that is not our policy.
And I understand it's not our policy, but I think it's a bad look for us to not have that discussion. I've been to many meetings, including school board meetings, where they won't discuss, and I understand that. But we've made a, we've made a point historically of discussing things with people who've come before us, because I do think it fosters good communication. I think it makes them feel like we are working with them and not something holding ourselves above them. I think if, we should allow for at least a modicum of that communication to occur. Even if it's in our policy, I understand.
It's in our code of procedure, but that's how it's supposed to be.
Well, maybe, I just believe maybe that's something we should readdress.
Well, it's in our governing body handbook.
I understand that. All I'm saying is, we've operated against it for other issues. I think we should hew to the same now. Or at least look at changing our handbook to hew to what we have been doing, because I think what we've been doing works well.
Is that available for a copy?
True. Okay, next person up.
Angela Sutton, Schmely, 406 North 17th, Ward four. I was shocked to discover that after the last meeting on July 6, that there is continued discussion against the installation of a temporary course as was voted on 6 to 2. I find it humorous that particular individuals find there needs to be more extensive research into disc golf. I feel you have spent more than enough time on this matter. People want, people will make it happen, so just go with it. There are much larger issues at hand that need your attention, as Ariana Miller stated. What concerns me the most is that the Administration and Finance Committee took it upon themselves to come up with a list of concerns and questions, many of which have nothing to do with the funding for the project. I understand if you want an attorney to look into these things, but here you have been mentioning funds, and yet more tax dollars are being tied up because you feel an attorney is necessary to answer a lot of these questions. Many of those questions can be answered by your well-educated citizens. Or even the person who proposed the initial concept of the disc golf course to you, Kyle Baraki. Have you forgotten about him, and what can he offer? He has substantial resources, as he was able to offer a fully sponsored course and a community of people willing to make it all happen and use the course. I understand some of these questions and some of the following you have already answered before public comment, but I still feel they need to be heard since many people have been asking these questions. Why is the Parks and Recreation Committee not part of further research? Is it because the Finance Committee is made up of Terry Hughes, Darlene Boss, and Diane Troller?
Again, you can't direct her comments.
I'm not directing it. I'm not directing it. I'm stating to the public who is on these committees based off what's on your website. I am not, I'm not directing anything at them.
Okay.
Okay? Two of them were solid no votes against the course. This is fact, this was in the minutes. On the other hand, the Parks and Rec Committee is made up of Jason Barnes, Todd Fry, and Gina Graham. All three were yes votes. Was this committee not asked to look into this further simply because two of them took matters into their own hands at the last meeting and pushed for what many citizens wanted? Or why was the Ad Hoc Committee not asked to look into more details with the addition of Kyle Baraki? It is so very clear that your constituents are looking forward to this disc golf course, so why is this being dragged out further? Your people are confused because here we are, thinking we get to enjoy this new sport, but then more roadblocks have been presented. We have reached a point where it is time to let we, the people, take matters into our own hands. Let us decide if we want the risk of getting hit by flying frisbees. We all take a risk going to the park, whether it be to swim, go for a walk, or hit a tennis ball. A branch can fall at any time. There are blind spots all over the pool and the park, where children can't be seen. And tennis balls can occasionally fly over the high fence, even though it's there as a safety precaution. Nothing is 100% safe, ever. Never. Stop creating more reason for the people to lose faith in you and start spending time on things that matter a great deal more in our community. Stop being part of the problem and be the kind of representatives we, the people, deserve. Stop being part of the problem and be the kind, I just said that, sorry. Several of you are representing your people well, and I so thank you that you're listening to us, and you're approachable, and we can talk to you. And that's part of the thing, is you need to be approachable. Please remember, these positions are not meant for power-hungry egos. They are meant for leaders who want to ensure our votes matter.
Your time is up.
But you interrupted me at the beginning. I have one more sentence. You are no more important than any of us just because you hold this elected position. You only get one vote, like the rest of us. Thank you for letting me add that in there.
Thank you.
Kyle Baraki, 1307 May Street, Ward one. During the July 9 meeting, a majority vote of 6 to 2 passed to move forward with my proposed project. Yet here it is on the agenda tonight, still facing opposition as if democracy did not have its day. There are checks and balances in place for a reason. You were overruled and didn't get your way, so you act out in a manner unbecoming for people of your status on this council. You are not a fair representation of the people in town that I have come to know and love. Municipalities outside of Marysville are laughing at us due to the unprofessional manner in which you not only handled this situation, but how you handled yourself in this public position. You are now making a mockery of the democratic process, and for that, I am asking that Madam Mayor and Councilman Hughes submit a letter of resignation immediately.
Woo-hoo! 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 Todd? All right.
Keith Pyklin, 902 Hillcrest, Ward two. And I missed the last couple discussions on the disc golf course, so I want to know something point blank. Councilman Barnes, why do you want it at the City Park?
Again, you can't direct a specific public comments to a specific council member. That's not how public comments work. You're too aggressive, the entire group.
Can I answer him if I want to?
That's not how public comments are supposed to work, Jason.
But he's free to do what he wants, though.
I can answer him if I want to. I don't probably, I mean, if there's a lot of questions, I'll answer them.
I probably will never play this golf. Maybe I will after all the headache it's been, just because, just the people that has contacted me and the feedback I've gotten from our constituents and residents, I just think it's the best place for it to get the most views and people are actually more involved.
Councilman Throm.
Same. Constituents, that's the best place for it.
Councilman Throller.
I just feel like we need to give it a chance and let him play. I mean, all we can do is try, and if it works, fine, and if it doesn't work, then we need to change.
Councilman Fry.
Ditto. No, seriously, I think the case has been made, I think there's a groundswell of support, and I agree that it deserves a chance. It's met the bar, as far as I'm concerned, for us to give it a shot.
Councilman Hughes, why do you vote no?
Why did I vote no?
Yes.
The park isn't big enough for the disc that I purchased, the driver. Somebody's going to get hurt, and it's not going to be on my conscience.
Why do you think they'll get hurt?
Anyone who gets hit in the face with the driver that I have will get hurt. They're not like my dog's frisbee. They are a dangerous weapon if they're, if somebody gets hit and doesn't know it's coming. That's why.
So there's going to be some kind of etiquette in this.
Pardon?
Etiquette? It's just like golf etiquette.
I agree.
This golf etiquette is, if you're going to have somebody in your, your point of aim or view, we ain't going to throw the disc. That's, there's, it's not possible. If you, if you see somebody wanting to walk across, you're not going to throw the disc. I mean, these courses aren't law, okay? They're not going to be law. I mean, it's, so we can throw the safety thing out, what is, what is really preventing you from having it in the City Park?
You can't throw the safety thing out.
Besides, okay, besides the safety. Safety's your number one concern, right?
Only. I'm not against disc golf. Everybody thinks that I'd put a slam on disc golf.
Okay, then why not at the City Park? Are you okay with it at Dargitz or Lakeview?
No. At Lakeview, yeah.
Okay, why not at City Park? Because there's hardly nobody there.
Yes, there's people there all the time.
No, there isn't.
Well, I'm not, I'm not here to argue with you, Keith. You asked me what my reasoning was, I told you why. If that's not good enough for you, the best thing I can say, you got to talk to somebody else.
Okay, Councilman Graham, why do you want it at, why do you vote yes?
I think it's okay to try it, to try it. But I also said to have it at Lakeview too, because I have had people comment that don't want it in City Park, for whatever their reasons were, and that's why I suggested having two run concurrently at Lakeview. Well, I said at different times. Todd said run concurrently to, and get feedback from the community on them.
Councilman Pipia? Councilman Pippia?
I want it, I want the disc golf brought here. And I'm looking forward to it personally. It looks, it looks interesting. But I also have got the attitude that, I'm sixty years old, I'm, I'm crossing the bridge, and there is fortunately, a lot of younger professionals coming to town, making their lives here, they're having, they're having investments in here, they're, they're taking their time. They are the ones up and coming, and they're taking the spots of the people who've been older, the ones that have been staple here. And if, I've never played it, and what I read online, I did a lot of reading the last three days, this is, this is something that's extremely popular. And if this is what they do, and this is gonna be their town, it's always gonna be our town, even if we retire, but this is their town, and they need to form it, and I'm sure, because I love this town in a positive way. And that's why.
And your time is up. Do you want Darlene to respond or not?
Time's up already?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask you one question, though?
It's, but I want to say, members should refrain from entering into a dialogue with the citizen. The time on the agenda is not intended for a discussion between the governing body and the citizen, and should not be used for that purpose. That is what our governing, and you should know that, Keith.
Well, I also know that, that this whole matter should be brought up in a Parks and Rec Committee, not Financial and, and that committee, okay? That's Parks and Rec's business, not, not nobody else. I do know that.
Okay, thanks. All right, I think that's the seven, so we will go on, on our agenda. And the first item is the Chamber of Commerce gravel dash request. Is somebody here from the chamber?
Hello.
Hi.
Case Viller, Chamber of Commerce. Um, we were here a couple weeks ago to discuss gravel dash, and we had to, um, meet with Greg Lawson, who are in Park separately, to kind of go over a couple of things, and we agreed, and sent an agreement, signed agreement from the three of us to you guys. And so we just wanted to review what.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing it back. Um, unlocking the restrooms in Main Street, does the police do that at 5:00 AM?
They have in the past.
The police has?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, about cleaning the showers, when do you expect the pool to be cleaned, and will this be after that date?
This is...
This is September eighth.
September eighth. Um, well, the pool will be closed by then.
So will it be cleaned?
It should be cleaned by then, yes.
And so, then we'll have to get staff to go in and clean it again?
Mm-hmm.
But the whole, you're in process for the pool to be done?
Yes.
Okay. So, and, um, the caution signs, um, at tenth and moment, we can, we can make those, um, it says turn on the caution lights at tenth and moment, that's our new crossing. Can we turn them permanently on?
The, the, on the crosswalk.
Well, the very last one on the request, turn on the caution lights at tenth and moment. Tenth and moment is where our new bumpouts are, right?
Yeah, the new ones, we were, didn't really know. That's how they worked or not, but if they, they work.
The only options are if they're operated singly or together. So I could flip the switch, and you press one of the buttons, and all of them will go off, or, uh, like they're operating right now, you press a button and only one crossing goes off.
You can't set them to just be on caution all day.
And so, and you don't want it set so the ones at spring go off. You don't need spring to go off. So, um, so...
It's operated by button.
It's only by, yeah.
And you have down that you're gonna have the bicyclists go the opposite way on the one-way street? And so you're gonna have volunteers at both ends of that street at tenth and twelfth?
Yes.
And so the tenth person can turn, do that? The tenth person, we turn the lights on and off?
At tenth street.
Yeah. Is that what you're gonna do?
That is true. That's the way it has to be done, I guess.
Okay. Okay. And on this, on this map, you, there's two bars that are, that's so start and finish line, there's a short bar and a long bar?
Yeah, the, the, they'll start where the long one is, and then the finish is actually gonna be where that short one is.
Oh, that's the start, finish, okay.
Yeah.
And this is the start. Okay, and then the, the snow fence, is it gonna be just on Broadway, or is it gonna, I'm sorry, just on Eighth Street, or is it gonna be on Broadway as well?
It, that's where it will be on Broadway there.
Well, will it be right where these barricades are?
Yes, it'll be the barricades and then right there.
The snow fence, so is that the only place, this snow fence is right at that intersection, kinda?
Well, all the way down. And then down. Through the cones area. Through, by the, the dots.
Through the cone area as well?
Yeah.
Okay. But it will just be to that finish line, because they're not gonna go beyond that?
To where all those lines are, or where all those dots are, you want snow fence there.
You want, you want snow fence all the way to the stage area?
They have to decline to turn around, slow down, turn around. Because they'll be the cars and stuff.
I have a question about, um, and I think this is maybe a mistake. On number two, it says on your agreement in the eight-hundred block of Broadway, should that maybe be seven-hundred block?
Yeah, seven to eight. Yeah. Yeah, you're right, should be seven-hundred block.
And Todd, last meeting you were talking about some kind of finish, are they doing whatever that finish you were talking about?
No.
Gentlemen's finish.
Oh, yes, we are doing that.
So, yeah, no flying bikes.
I thought you were talking about the movement.
No, this is the, you don't tell them no sprints across the brick, because it's a bad idea for everyone.
Yeah.
Okay. You guys have any other questions about this agreement? I guess you guys have the snow fence and are putting it up, and, uh, the barricades, is the city take the barricades up and then they set them up? Is that how it works?
They've always set them on the corners and stuff, and we put them where we need them.
And say, well, with the cones?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. So do you guys have any other questions? Or I would entertain a motion to accept as presented with those slight changes, obviously they can't do that very last thing about caution lights.
I move to approve as, with a few changes.
With the change of seven-hundred as well as the caution, okay. Those are the only two changes? Darling?
Yes.
Are those the only two changes? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dito? All right. Hope it's a great event, that you're combining two bikes and cars. All right. Wayne, you're up next.
Good evening. Wayne Cruzy, President of the Marshall County Arts Cooperative. We're getting ready for Squirrel Jam, Sunday, August nineteenth, from three to seven in City Park. We're moving it to the bandstand to showcase that great natural place for bands to perform, plus Eve is right there to serve as the mat and the squirrel jam, so we're excited about that. Uh, if you, if you didn't have attended a jam or a squirrel jam, it's a time when different groups, bands, individuals, small groups can come and share their talents with, with people that are there. So for those that are coming, we are requesting that they are able to bring coolies of beer. Uh, and if you think about where the bandstand is, there's kind of a natural border to the east, there's the sidewalk, and then there's the road. So we're envisioning coming in a couple of feet, we'll rope things off, so it's very clear where people can drink beer. We did this last year for a longer period of time, and several of you came to me afterwards and said, there weren't any problems, this was really fun. So, uh, we're hoping that will happen again this year, and we're hoping we'll be able to allow people to bring alcoholic beer, I could say beer, to the jam.
Are you gonna have signs on there like they have at the car show?
Yes.
That, no, beyond that? Okay. And then are you gonna, uh, prepare a consumption request like it, like normal, or is this your actual consumption request?
Hmm, so I'm gonna fill them out. Yeah, I'll fill them out.
So we will approve it with you filling out a standard consumption request.
Yes.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, does anyone else, does, I entertain a motion to accept?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion with Wayne? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dito?
Thank you.
Okay, Wayne.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is Darren Schrader.
Good evening. I'm Darren Schrader, I'm the Principal of Marysville Junior Senior High. Um, I sent some information, I submitted it, um, there's a map there on the parking request. Um, we're very excited, we're almost finished with the new Activity Center addition, and, um, we are asking that you, uh, team up with us and allow us to have a bus parking zone to the west of the new Activity Center, so we can safely unload the visiting teams' players and, and go into, directly into the new facility, which will give them access to both gyms. Um, it would be convenient for them, it's convenient for us to meet them and greet them, and would also allow us to free up some other areas for parking the rest of the evening. So we are asking that you would look at this and consider it, and, uh, help us out with that, so we can be courteous to others and give them a great invitation to a great facility that we're gonna have.
I noticed that the, uh, recommendation from the staff, it says staff does not recommend approving permanent parking for buses, as many people report parking issues surrounding the high school and junior high. What, what is your alternative?
Alternative? Um, we'd have to probably, um, either looking at it, probably park there in the front, wipe out all that, um, place where you can in the north side, you'd have to let them be there, or we'd have to send them over and park in the park and have kids cross there and, uh...
Yeah, I'm speaking personally, I've been a little concerned that this project's been very thorough and large in scope, but the one element in the room that's not addressed is parking.
Well, that's something our, um, school board is working on currently, and as you notice, there is something going on in the south side.
Right.
With, with those situations.
Which I hope will, you know, help with it, but I, I share the misgivings of our staff as far as losing any parking for buses. I mean, it's, it's easy for a bus to stop, unload everybody with its flashers on, go park somewhere else, whereas if it's here, then it's just that many more spaces that we're losing for cars. And it's not even just for students. Students can walk, but there's a lot of residents and even people from other teams that travel that may be older and things, and this, you know, they also could drop off somebody and go park, but sometimes that presents difficulties. I'm, I'm more concerned with them walking than the athletes, I guess.
Right. I guess at the end of the nights, when everybody goes home, but some of us are there, when those flashing lights take up that whole area where those kids come out, you have all the elderly having to walk through and around buses when they're picking up those kids after a game.
That's true.
So by putting those kids and those people right there, um, they get to go in and out, they don't have to go around the public, they don't have to walk through the crowd, they can come out safely to their bus and leave, and you know that, we kind of figure the first priority is the student athlete on those evenings and the students.
Well, what am, is the, now that you're not doing that, Boag Building, are you trying to make that parking to the south?
You know, Carl, to be honest, that's something that's our board, I'm not representing that tonight. I'm here to ask you about the bus unloading, so, because we have activities coming up, so they asked me to do that. But I know that's something they're gonna work on, and they're working on as they speak, but I would hate to, to speak for them.
I, I guess I would like this, I, I'm, I'm open to the idea of this, but I'd like to see it as part of a, like, parking plan. You know, I'd like to know what's happening with that south lot, and know what's happening with the north, like you said, maybe move, changing the way that's used.
And I've discussed that with Bill today.
Okay.
Before coming, and he said that, be, feel free to call him, he'd be happy to talk to you about that.
Okay, and I'm sure...
But I just, I don't wanna say something...
No, I understand, and I understand the board's working on it, but...
Yes.
If the board said, look, we want kind of a, you know, an MOU or something, that this is kind of what we're like, what we'd like to do, and this is part of it, then it's easier for me to digest.
I know that's...
I am worried about the parking situation. I brought it before about the curb and gutter there on your new entrance.
Yep, right.
And I think we are gonna work on that as soon as construction's finished. We've talked about the lay-down curb, well, lay-down curb and the curb outside the new junior high entrance by the bulldog entrance. It's really messy, and so, I mean, I, I do think we should work with you guys on it, but I'd just like to see, instead of doing it piecemeal, part of a, a set plan, right?
They tore down those buildings down there, south of the school, and they didn't do anything with that space. They should've made some parking or something down there. I mean, they have options.
The building south of the school.
Well, those, those, that grocery store, those houses and stuff they bought down there.
I'd encourage you to drive by and look at it, because you probably see what you're talking about. I, I've not discussed that, but you're gonna see that there's gravel and everything there which you're discussing.
Yeah.
And that would be, if we use that, if we would use that, then Todd's, we're gonna take up a lot more stalls than what Todd's worried about. You're only talking about the side of a road, and you're gonna be talking, you're gonna take up a whole parking lot, parking buses.
But do they let people park there?
When?
Where those, where those houses were.
The rock, rock lot.
They're working on it. I can't tell you yes or no, I don't know when it's gonna be done.
And that's what I was asking, is if we can get it parked out.
Is this gonna be a permanent deal you want blocked in there, or just days that there's sporting events in town, Darren?
That'd be something we'd have to talk about and, um...
You know what I mean? If there's not a sporting event on a certain day, can, can the kids or somebody park there on days there's gonna be sporting events? You can set cones or something out to block, and I mean...
I would say that that would be probably, I mean, that would only make sense, you know, but I mean, when we're having the games and stuff, that would be the priority.
But you presented, but you presented permanent, really.
Okay, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, right? I mean, I just wanted to make sure you...
You know, it was put in there for a bu, for the unloading?
Yeah.
Unloading, yes. I mean, so, I mean, I can't answer that, but if, I mean, they're asking for that to be a bus loading and unloading zone.
I just hate to see it tied up all day long when you can park five or six cars in there.
I understand what you're saying, is we're just trying to get the best of it, sure we can do.
I wonder if we could make it so it says bus parking during school hours, have a sign up there that's, of course, you want it extended because of activities, so that wouldn't work. Maybe school days? I don't know. It wouldn't work then either, because you have, like, wrestling on Saturdays and forensics on Saturdays, so, okay. All right, what is...
Well, my comment is that usually the athletes arrive early, then they shower after the games, and then leave later after, usually with the travel.
Most kids don't, I mean, a lot of the kids don't shower after the games now, but I will tell you this much, you have three, you have three or four different teams leaving at different times, and you have, I mean, where they're coming and going, I mean, you have JV, you have varsity, a freshman, you have people coming, you have people going, there's a lot of different activities. It's not, I mean, there's, ballgames go from a lot of different times. We have many different things going on, too. We have many different things going on too, I mean, we got places going and them leaving. We also have our own buses coming home at night at different times with our own kids being dropped off which is, can be very difficult, they're stopping in the middle of the street and doing those things, so it would be nice to be able to drop them off right where they need to be and for those kids to be safe at night as well.
Well, then there's not gonna be anybody parking there then probably, so...
Depends, depends if you have a game.
And I know the board's, as you said, still working on a kind of a master plan for what to do with that south property, but it could, I mean, I'm just spitballing things, I'm not putting words in the board's mouth, but it could be something where they have a bus parking area in that, along the south side of the, where the weight room is and that.
Could be.
I mean, where then you'd still have easy access and off the street, there's a lot of options.
Right, but not for what we're currently going into right now.
I understand that.
Your building will be done August 1st?
The building will be done, the gym will not be done August 1st, it'll be a little later, but it will be done before the games are, but it's looking at, yes, the date.
You guys have any other questions for Mr. Schrader? So, the way it was presented was for permanent parking there, so I would entertain a motion for that and we'll see how that goes?
I will move that we make it a permanent parking for two buses.
As requested?
As requested.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I...
Excuse me, I'll have to bring back an ordinance. Well, don't we want to know if we want to prepare the, so the question, so the motion would be to prepare an ordinance, who made the motion?
I did.
To prepare an ordinance to allow that permanent bus parking, okay, who was my second?
Jason.
Okay, Jason, you go second as preparing an ordinance, okay. Is that all right, Debbie?
And I just want, as far as discussion, to, just to reiterate that a vote on this or a vote against this isn't, you know, a decision based on wanting to work, or I guess it shouldn't be indicated, how do I want to say this, it shouldn't be indicative of the way we want to work with the school. I, like, I think I've explained that I just want more information and I think a lot of us necessarily aren't ready to proceed, but it doesn't mean we don't want to work with the school, I just want to be really, really clear about that.
All right. With that being said, any further discussion? So, the motion is to allow the permanent parking, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
There were two four, you and Terry were four, and six against, did I get it right? Two six? All right, so at this point in time, how, what would you like to request from Mr. Schrader? Do you want him to come back with other options?
It would be nice when you, like, saying you guys are still working on things, you are on a little more solid ground, so you can speak to us about whether there are other parking options or whatever ideas or whatever's going on in the background right now, you cannot speak for them.
Well, I mean, I think if you put a parking lot, that definitely would be for students and adults to park. I mean, it's, I mean, if you're gonna use your parking lot to park buses, then you're gonna have the same situation you guys are talking about now, people are, you're gonna take stalls away from other people.
I would take that comment to mean that if you provide parking in that southern area, that would allow us to go ahead and move forward, is that kind of what, that if you can come back to us and say, "Hey, we're gonna plan parking for teachers and students and that," then we would probably be more receptive, is that a great counsel?
And there's been situations in my experience where we've maybe approved something thinking other things would happen and the other things didn't happen and so we created more of a problem and accidentally, where the school board's completely within their purview to do something different with that area, they want green space or they want a staging area for something, I have no idea, there's any number of things and then we've actually lowered amount of parking and made the problem worse and we're trying to help the problem. So, that's why I think we'd like to see it flushed out.
So, you're, so I'm just asking, so it's okay with you to take all the parking away from the people that are supposed to be doing their RVs and stuff for the, plus the park, all the buses over there at the park?
Where's the buses parking, where are the buses parking now?
We used to send them over there and they'd park over in the, in your parking park, circle area.
We can buy, we can send them down to the pool parking, nobody's using that in the evenings, that we, that's only a block over, two blocks away.
I guess we're trying to get away from having to use your parking area to be able to put them right by.
And we appreciate that, but we're trying to get away from students using our parking area while buses are there, you see what I mean? It's, there's X amount of vehicles have to go somewhere and we're just trying to make sure that there's enough somewhere.
This is not a, no, this is an informational...
In the past, didn't you park on Walnut though?
What?
Didn't you lots of times have buses park there along Walnut, just east of the handicap parking? I thought I always saw buses there.
That's where we pick up and drop off our students during the day.
That's pick-up, drop-off, but it's not...
If you take that up, then you're gonna really get into what, you're taking people off on the major traffic way where we're gonna bus, you're talking, you're gonna take all those parking spots away from Walnut.
I think the drivers usually end up somewhere else, like you said, because I've seen them, you know, maybe at Hardee's or wherever they can go, they can park a bus.
I know, David.
That's not a bad thought, that, I mean, for parking lot, have they ever used that before?
I guess I was just thinking that, you know, that we want to show that courtesy and that convenience to our guests and I think that's what we kind of strive to be and we want to be cordial and we want, we want, we want to know when we send our kids, our kids here in Marysville to other places, that they're gonna be taken care of and they're thought of first and that we are hoping as administration that that's what we're gonna perceive to other schools and other parents and other community people that when you come here, we're gonna put your kids somewhere, we're gonna take care of your kids first because that's who, they're here to be here and that's our responsibility and that's what we hope we give the same.
Or maybe you can come back with a more permanent thought of the southern parking lot.
I don't need to sit stand, I just, there's no other permanent thought, that's what we need, that's the safest, but if we need to, we'll go in another direction and we'll do that.
Well, and we're explaining too that, you know, we need to make sure that there's parking for all the students and if these, if there's eight spots gone here, if you said, "Hey, no, but we're gonna put eight more spots in over here," I'd go, "Oh, okay, we come out," but when it's like, well, we can't say whether those eight spots will ever come to fruition, then it's hard for me to say, "Okay."
Call Bill.
I will, yeah.
I know being a bus driver, different schools and stuff, I've been to, they have no parking here game night, when game night's there, they actually close it off, but when there's not games going on, it's open public, parking to anybody, so...
Yes.
That would be a thought, I mean, if they would be willing to come back with a temporary deal, I mean...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is Nick Stoll on the incentives program.
Hello, Nick Stoll, I am here to ask to just be included on the incentives program because I'm hoping to get started on my project.
And I told him that we haven't approved the project yet, but he's asking to be grandfathered in, okay? If we approve it, he would like to be grandfathered in and, you know, obviously if it doesn't come to fruition, he won't, he won't be grandfathered in, but how do you guys feel about that?
The only problem I have with that, like, I had a resident contact me the other day when he caught something about me in the street.
I'm sorry, what?
He caught me in the street, he has two houses he's wanting to tear down and he was asking me about the incentive program and what, I told him, "Well, it's, we're kind of talking about it, we haven't finalized anything yet and the issue's gonna be if we do that for him, then we can do that for everybody else that comes to the council."
I would think, say that would have to be true, I agree with that.
I mean, that's, that's the only problem.
So, if someone else does want to come in and do that...
In the designated areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, as we initially drafted it.
His or both are definitely designated areas, so...
So, I don't really have a problem using, because we do want that area improved, so I don't have a problem saying if we set this precedent that we will continue on.
Since it's a triplex, it's not a personal residence, it's his property, so it's not retail, would we give this, would we give this, we wouldn't give this to a retail person coming down and wanting to set up a business down there, would we?
Well, it wouldn't be zoned for...
That's, well, it's zoned differently than...
I know it's zoned different, but this is rental.
But you're just saying, are we, are we gonna expand it to commercial?
Yeah.
I guess I never thought about it, but I guess I wouldn't really have a problem with that.
Okay, if we're gonna do that, then I'm fine, but it just, the way it stays now, that's fine, it's a question.
It's for housing, correct?
For housing.
Residential.
She's not living there.
It says housing, but then you get into the, the triplex really residential.
Well, it's housing.
It's zoned differently.
It's just different density.
I think...
It's, it's not zoned, then you get... Those tell them different to residential for a triplex? Nope. It's R3, it's always been R3, still R3.
Our intention was for development there, so I don't really understand, I don't think we'd have a problem expanding it to commercial.
And according to the way it's taxed, it's gonna be residential.
Just a question, has down the road, if somebody else comes in and wants to put a, you know, maybe get a couple, three, four lots down there and they want to put a, you know, a ten, a ten resident, you know, facility down the area, just as long as we can do this for them.
Well, it's, well, our guideline was the housing must have raised at $45,000 or more.
What type?
And I did go down and talk to Francine Crumey, the county appraiser, and she said that, I asked her, I said, "Is any new construction valued at less than $45,000?" And she said it could be valued as low as $35,000, so I was thinking we should go ahead, we want the development, so I don't have a problem taking it down to that lower number of $35,000 since Francine said it could be as low as that. But with that being said, you're just saying if, if somebody buys four lots, then it would be, I guess the key thing would be as long as it was $35,000 per lot, so it'd be times four.
Or if they put like a, an apartment building for the elderly down there.
Well, that would be, that'd be a uses permitative on review, I'm kinda looking at Darlene because she's a...
Depending on how it's zoned.
Yeah.
That would be zoned, so they'd have the chance to get, you know, help with that. Now, I'm just saying, because something down the road's gonna come up and then this is gonna, nothing against you, this will get regurgitated back.
Yeah.
We did this, you guys did this for Nick, I want to put this down there for maybe, you know, it's a nice, cool, full of trees, nice little area, you know, and we could put this down there, it is closer to downtown, you know, for the elderly.
We were just trying to avoid garages, so we put it on a home.
Well, that's fine, I got it, I just wanted to put it forward.
I mean, if, if you go off what the county's gonna say, they're gonna say it's either residential, commercial or industrial and it's gonna be separated out by parcel ID, so I mean, to me, that's how I would structure it.
And I guess from the commercial side of it is they pay higher property taxes, so we probably want to encourage that all the more, right?
Okay, right.
So, with that being said, if we approve this, I would think that we had talked about how Dave would have to know beforehand that they wanted these incentives to take a picture of before and after, just for our records of what it looked like before. So, you guys have any other concerns about what we would have to do prior to grandfathering this in? So, I would entertain a motion if you want to grandfather him in to the incentives. I guess do we have, we haven't even called it anything specific yet. I guess we'd have to make the motion specifically for the economic incentives we have for the Marysville proper, valid and moral and, what's the other one?
How better?
What? How better, thank you. So, that would have to be the motion so that we're specific, since we don't have a resolution number yet?
I still move.
Is there a second?
There's none.
And do you have any further discussion? So, all in favor of being grandfathered in to that resolution in the draft form, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ada?
Thank you.
Okay, Nick, thanks so much. The next item is the landscape grant program, Austin, are you gonna talk about that?
I'll talk a little bit about this. We were recently approached by Kim Bonberger with the Forest, Kansas Forest Service about this grant. She's trying to write for multiple communities and basically what it is, is a grant that helps pay for 10 to 20 landscape-sized trees to go into each of these communities and it's a program designed to teach people, citizens in each, in each community about diversifying your trees. So, it's an educational thing as showing what kind of trees you can plant in your own yard and showing how well it grows in whatever public domain they put it in and that way you don't just have your normal array of trees that you see around town like we, and face the possible catastrophe of getting all your like trees wiped out just like the elm, elm trees with the Dutch elm disease and then ash trees here coming soon with the Emerald Ash Forest. So, it's really about the education portion of it. And Kim was looking for us to approve this and it's, I believe it's a three-year program and we get either 10 to 20 trees if we can put them somewhere on public property.
It's 10 or 20 trees total?
Yeah, yes, not per year, right, yeah.
And then the three, $2,000 investment, we have to make annually or in two?
Um, she basically explained it as about what we would normally designate for our forestry budget, so it go, at least, at least that amount that we have to participate in our Tree City USA program.
So, we can double dip for both purposes, for that $2,000?
Yes, 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 yes.
And so, I guess the concept of 10 and 20 trees, that's quite a few trees, do you have any idea of where we're gonna put these?
And that's why, one of the reasons why there's no narrative with this, I can't think of a spot and we were trying to figure that out, whether you guys have any ideas, any thought processes. Our city park is, is full up and we don't, I mean, we could possibly find a spot for one or two trees in there.
Way vast.
Excuse me, one, one comment at a time, please?
Were you first?
Oh, you probably were, go ahead.
Dargatz Park, some people have asked me before about trees on that south side.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, there, there used to be trees there and they got old and they died.
South side, okay.
And that's where a lot of kids and youth are.
You know, in the middle of Dargatz Park, I mean, there's a, there's a field and there's a field, is the middle used?
I've seen them use it for, for flag football, I've seen kids using it.
You have used flag football?
I have, I've seen kids playing in the middle.
So, we wouldn't, so we wouldn't want it in the middle, we'd want it on the perimeter?
I would be a little nervous, yeah, but there's lots of room on the perimeter.
Yeah.
Along 20th Street, would there be any room we could put some trees?
20th Street where? Because we have them by, like, you know, already.
Where, you think then we use more or across the street?
Across the street.
Well, we're gonna put the fire station there hopefully.
Fire station will take up the whole area a little bit.
No.
And where, and where, it would be further south.
Further south, by the National Guard Armory in there, in that area.
I thought about the road down to the lake, Lakeview, along between there and the outfield of that field, there's, it's just wide open grass slope, it might be kind of a nice area to make that a tree lane down through there, it's wide open, it might break the wind too, a little bit.
And you know, at the, at Memorial Day, it's always hot, the cemetery, I wonder if we could put any trees in there, because there's only trees on the east side.
There is a, as far as the cemetery, and this is, we may be wrong, but they kind of wanted it in an easily, like, I know a lot of people go to the cemetery on a regular basis, but you don't really think about going to the cemetery to learn about new trees.
Oh, because the interpretive stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
They're supposed to be marked to...
Yeah, they're gonna be marked.
The species, I think Lakeview's a good place, just by the lake.
In between that number.
Up into the airport.
And then I thought, you know, maybe on the 7th Street Belt, don't we, don't we even need trees along there?
Yes, this program, I believe, begins in 2019, so we would have to be well underway, yeah, we'd have to actually fit it into that project, I thought about that, if we can, if we're in, in that project where we can plant trees.
There's no trees there now.
Right.
What about along the 7th Street corridor between Elm and Walnut, where's the, the gravel section of 7th Street?
The gravel?
It's just kind of vacant, I think Darlene retalked about that section, the street's not finished.
They use that for the barbecue though, don't they? That's the ones the boss moves.
Up to the ri, I would just mean along the right of way there, not the, not the 7th Street street, on the west side of Boss Motor Zone, right, where there used to be cars parked there between there and the Habitat House, is that what you're talking about?
That's Boss Motor property?
But on the east side.
And then on the east side, that, that's where all those hookups are for that barbecue.
A couple of trees to be shade above the barbecue, would they be in the way too mu, I mean, if I, me personally, if I have a camper somewhere, I want to be near a tree or under a tree, not out in the open, but I'm just throwing out ideas at any rate.
Yeah.
Do all the trees need to be in one area?
Not necessarily.
Can you spread them out throughout the city?
We can spread them out.
But you'd have to have like an interpreter center somewhere, right?
Yeah, they wanted, they wanted, I think each tree marked and then, I forget if they said they wanted a big explanation.
Well, maybe Dargatz is our best bet.
Well, the...
Why don't you put them down the lake?
We do have around, around the, yeah.
That's a good idea, this is a good project for the tree board.
And not, not to keep bringing this, upbringing the school up, but I don't know what their landscaping plans are, maybe it'd be something that would help them or help some other project that's already in the works and help them save them money too.
So, you need us to say we are in favor of it today?
Moving forward, yes.
And then you can defer to this tree board or have them make a recommendation?
As long as you believe we have space for it, I would say move forward with the grant, that way she can have her answer.
I think we have space.
So, I would entertain a motion?
Move to approve the landscape grant program with the USDA Forest Service.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Ada, all right. And you'll send it to the tree board and have them make a recommendation?
Yep.
All right, the next item is the ROS request. Chief, do you want to talk about this at all or not?
I think Austin can, I don't know, I already can ask for it.
Okay.
We had an employee put together some paperwork for the rural opportunities zone, the ROS program, basically requesting. And the ROS program is the, a state program that assists people with their student loans. And the program's designed to attract those people to rural areas such as ours. Our county has approved or is in the rural opportunity zone, and that's what enables us to look at this. They don't necessarily put funds toward it, but they allow us, allow employees around Marshall County to participate in the rural opportunity zone. So, we had an employee put in the application, now there's a request for your approval, I guess.
So, you know, just to reiterate, the county approves it, but we have to fund it as a, as a ROS county. The map on page 19 kind of clarifies that, that we are a county that the employer has to pay their share. Then Debbie called Sonia Stoes, County Clerk Sonia Stoes, and she said that there's none available right now, that the year begins August 1st, and then that, that this officer could be put on a waiting list, and it would be identified that the city is willing to pay the employer side. I, I couldn't figure out if the ones, all of the ones on the waiting list have employee sponsored, employer sponsored or not, but the main thing is for us to, to approve it pending state approval, because it's up to the state to fund it anyway. But they probably, you know, like I said, it won't be funded this month, but it could be funded as early as August, depending on when the commissioners decide and when the state approves it.
Now, we understood that it was to be a recruiting tool incentive, and this is somebody who's already on our staff?
Nope.
Are there, are, do we have other employees that would be available for this, just so that we treat everybody the same?
I mean, there's other people with student loans, I don't know, one of them has talked to me, but I don't know, that one wants to talk anymore about it.
Is there a timeframe from when their employment begins to when they can apply, or is it just whenever?
I think it.
I didn't think there was, but.
Yeah, I didn't think, I don't think so. It's, if the employee, if the employer approves it, then it's, they want the program.
I think it's, you know, a good program, at least something that we can do, I mean, as far as writ large, but I think it's just another tool to show employees that we appreciate them and, you know, what they've done, because if they have student loans, they've probably got an education that they're using somehow for our benefit.
I just think we need to make sure that if we offer it to one employee, we should offer it to all.
Even, I agree.
So we can go ahead and approve this one pending state funding, and then we could go ahead and see if there's anyone else who wants to be included and they can come forward if they decide to be. So with that being said.
Would this come out of the PD budget, or where would this be proposed to come from?
Uh, it was suggested that it, it could come out of training in the PD budget.
All right, I move to approve. We move forward with the $900 to come from the PD training budget for the ROS program pending state funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ada? All right. The next item is a notice of budget hearing, it's on page 21. It's just approving publication of this, correct?
Yes.
A notice of hearing?
Nothing, nothing has really changed since we last had a conversation about this, but like she said, it's just putting this into the paper, notifying people that we're going to have our public hearing on August 13th at our normal council meeting. And that is when, after they've had a chance to see it in the paper, people can come in and talk about the budget if they wish.
The good thing about it is that it's staying flat for like the third or fourth year in a row, do you know how many years?
It's been a fourth, I think.
Fourth year in a row that it's staying flat, so. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the notice of hearing?
Move to oppose the notice of budget hearing published in a paper.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ada? All right. All right, at this time, I would entertain a motion to recess the city council meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ada, and I will do a call to order for the public building commission. Boss?
Present.
Capia?
Present.
Graham?
Present.
Hughes?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Trower?
Here.
From?
Present.
Barnes?
Present.
All right, the only item we have is the audit services for the PBC. I would entertain a motion?
Move to approve the audit services from the PBC in the amount of $1,250.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ada? We need a motion for an adjournment at the PBC?
Move to adjourn the public building commission.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ada, now we'll resume the normal order of business, but I am not aware of any notices or hearings, so we will go to the consent agenda, which is a convention and tourism request.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I asked to see a copy of it, did you guys all get a copy of it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I thought it was cute too, but I, when it said mural on the side of the wagon wheel, I was trying to figure out what that would look like, but I think that would look really nice. Okay. Was there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ada? All right, the next item is the appropriations ordinance?
Move to approve appropriation ordinance 3679, the amount of $368,920.91.
Is there a second?
Pause a minute.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I might mention several of the big items. 14th and Center Traffic Light is $24,500. The airport apron final figures are $28,464. And then our contract for half-year, half of the payment for Marysville Sport and Recs in the amount of $33,500.
And then our transfer.
Sixty-two thousand dollars.
And we had a water tower rehab debt payment of $16,234. That's why our amount was so high. And just to keep in mind, so when you see that payment for the Marysville Sport and Recreation, remember they are not our employees. We contract out with that business to run our rec program, so they are not our employees. Okay? So with that being said, roll call, please.
Mama, I had one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Mary, I asked Cindy a question today about a 1,200 or whatever it was deal about the extension on a fireplug, and I didn't know if she'd got a chance to ask the water department about that or not. Did you send it?
I did, and I was told that it was an extension up on Kipac, and it was because that could have been extremely wrong. Extension was one that was not correctly planned, we have to not request the light stop.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard most of it. My, my question was, we had contracted and paid for that once, and then that was two years ago, and now there's this $1,200 deal going against the city again. I just, I questioned.
Is my understanding, was the error in CES telling them what the order should have been this all along?
I couldn't hear what she said.
She said that there was an error in the CES plans and it should have been a longer extension to begin with.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
So do we have the, the one that we did not use as?
It's an extension.
About that?
I think we could go on the other side of what everyone.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Terry?
No.
Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Capia?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Trower?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Ada? All right, the next item is our staff report, our city minister's report?
Okay, first item up is pool staff, pool staff, basically a conversation starter. After August 12th, we lose the ability to be open for morning swim due to staffing. I've been looking into having the pool open with someone at the front desk checking passes and doing cleanup. I have checked with our insurance about the situation, and they said that since we were only allowing adults to swim, they were fine with it. I have someone in mind to fill this position, and that's Kathy Younger. So basically, we lose our, the lifeguards or the managers that would normally be there after August 12th to, for those morning times during the week. So we just need, if we want to keep it open for morning swim, we, according to our insurance provider, we have the option to basically have somebody at the front desk post that we don't, won't have a lifeguard on, on duty during those times and to swim at your own risk. Basically, the person at the front desk would be making sure that everybody was 18 and over at those times, especially when we have no lifeguard on duty. So that's what I'm presenting here, is the option to hire somebody to take over after August 12th and be open for morning swim.
So when you say cleanup, will she just clean up to that day? I mean, she's not going to do the cleaning?
No, 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 well, just keeping everything maintained. If there was something easy or that she can do, let's say the concession stand needed a little bit more attention, she'd be right there to be able to do that, or she can clean it, organize or whatever, not, nothing to do with chemicals, nothing to do with cleaning the slides or anything like that, that's something any, anybody, any one of us can do, just walking into a situation.
So the pool is going to close on the 12th, right? So when will they clean the pool, officially clean the pool?
They said they can start on things, if we are closing for regular swim after the 12th, they can start on Monday.
13th.
The 13th and start cleaning things like the slide that we won't be using anymore, the diving boards, the, and all that stuff, they can start that. And whatever they don't get done in those, in that week, they would continue to clean on the weekends.
Will that interrupt them cleaning the regular pool by us keeping the mornings swim open?
If they, if they keep them in that box, it will minimize anything. Like I said, they would be focusing on the bigger items that we wouldn't need to overcome.
And then we would close on the, on Labor Day the 2nd? Is that right? Or when would we close?
If, I would probably say at most.
On the 31st?
We would go, let's see.
On the 31st?
The 3rd would be the latest that, for morning swim.
Mayor, yes. It was stated that one of the lifeguards would qualify as manager?
Yeah.
Is that still true?
Yes, if we wanted to keep it open on the weekends, which is when.
I think it's a good idea to keep it open on the weekends.
Okay. Let's, I'll get to that portion later. So for morning, if it's, if it's important to keep it open for morning swim, which a lot of people think so, we can do it this way. Otherwise, if we're not going to waive the policy that says we, we need a lifeguard on duty, then we can't, we can't be open early because we wouldn't have any staff.
So you, we're just addressing the lifeguard in the morning swim?
Yes.
Or not a lifeguard, I'm sorry, staffing at the morning swim. Now, we probably go to the 31st, August 31st, that's the last Friday of May, of August?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, I was looking at that wrong, 31st, yeah.
So it'd be, so it'd give them an additional three weeks to swim. That's a lot, Diane, you would.
No, I, no, I'm, I'm not upset about that, but we're paying her more than we're paying the lifeguards.
I mean, I, it's.
I think you're going to make some lifeguards pretty upset.
I guess are we giving the lifeguards the option to work 6 to 8?
They don't, they, none of them will, none of them can.
I'm just.
I have nothing against Kathy, but I mean.
Well, I'm just saying if none of them are willing to work 6 to 8.
So if you told them $10 an hour to do it, they, they would say no?
They, they don't have, because our, our ones that go back to college aren't available, which is the, the managers.
They'd probably have to be 18 rather than a 15-year-old.
Yes.
That's why.
And the majority, the majority available would be 15-year-olds on those weekends, and we got to watch their hours on that.
I think we're going to have some really unhappy people that are working now 8, 6 to 8 that aren't making $10 an hour.
Nobody, nobody's going to be there working 6 to 8. If they, if they were available, it, we wouldn't even be talking about this, although we'd probably be talking about an additional person because we'd still need somebody and a manager to go there.
But, yeah, you know, we're, we're expecting our lifeguards, you know, and this gal's not even certified, to be trained, certified and everything to go to work for us in the city, and we're not paying them $10 an hour. I'm like dying here, I just have a real problem paying that kind of a price to a person when our people that we have, young they may be, but they're still going out and spending out of their own pocket, the $300 or $280 for their certification to come to work for the city of Marysville.
If it, but if they're not available, then you're going to go ahead, what are you going to do?
What can you pay for the 10 million dollars? Like, how much do you pay Lex or?
Minimum wage, $7.25, isn't it?
Yeah. And they're paying their own $280 plus to get certified.
Well, you might have her walk for that too, but I'm just saying for $7.25 an hour.
Austin, how did you come up with that figure, $10?
Um, she'd be responsible for a pool overall by herself. It's not as much as the manager's getting paid, but it's a little, I mean, it's, it's more than assistant manager's getting paid. I figure if we wanted to leave somebody in charge of the $4 million pool, I mean, that's, I mean, that was my thinking. You guys can have your own opinion.
So who's going to, if she's not checking chemicals, who's going to check chemicals?
Tony.
Tony will go every day and check chemicals?
Yeah.
It has to be done every morning, twice a day, once a day? What is it?
Uh, at least once a day. They, they probably, I think they check it twice a day, once in the morning and once during the swim.
So Tony will do that, continue to do that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, I would entertain a motion.
I move that Kathy Younger be hired at $10 an hour to open and close for morning swim.
From August 13th to the 31st?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain. She's a relative.
Oh, so is that 6-2-1, did I get that right? No, 5-2-1, that's too many people, 5-2-1? Okay, now do you want to talk about that?
Okay, so on the weekends, we were trying to figure out if we could staff on, for the upcoming weekends after August 12th. A preliminary study of who can show up for being a lifeguard shows maybe the first weekend after August 12th, we can have a full staff. After that, it's four or five lifeguards at a time, which would mean we shut the, the slides down while those were going on.
So there'd be no slides?
Yeah.
Because we don't have enough?
Right.
So what we would do is have the board open, the diving board?
The boards, yeah. And the rest of the pool.
So does that take us two, two guards down?
Yes.
So how many would we have to have?
We, um-
Four?
We'd have to at least, and I'd be splitting duties because I think you have to have eight on, eight on, eight on the line, or maybe seven, let's see, one, one, two, three, four, five, six, six or seven at a time.
We'd still need six or-
That's, that's what you would normally equip the pool with.
Without the slides?
With the slides.
So it'd go from, to four to five?
Yeah. So it'd be basically shutting down the slides. Our pool managers felt that, and this is their opinion obviously, but they feel that not very many people show up after school starts. So the idea of keeping it open for the weekends is, they kind of don't recommend that.
Do we have a date on our pool passes when people bought them when they were good for? Because you know theoretically, the pool has always been open till Labor Day.
When I asked that captain, we were selling them, we told them August 12th.
August what?
14th.
Okay.
We knew when school started, we would not have ours, we sold the passes.
Okay, just curious, because I know in past, it's always been Labor Day.
Every year we've ever had that, it's never planned out.
Right.
So four to five guards plus, we'd have to have a admissions person?
Right, yeah.
And we wouldn't have to have concessions because they'd be gone? Oh, they would have to have concessions.
If there was stuff left, we'd try to sell it.
So what do you guys want to do?
I think we should be open on the weekends.
If we can staff it, but you're not 100% sure at this time, or you are?
Just looking at it, we, we are lacking in staff for following that first weekend.
So you want to say yes contingent on available staff? You want to make the motion that way? I mean, he doesn't know for sure and-
Mm-hmm, right.
So that's your motion?
We made open for the weekends.
Through Labor Day?
Through Labor Day.
Staffing, staffing is adequate, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayo, all right. And you'll just let us know, I guess, so we, so here we are in open session saying this, how will our public know? How will we communicate it to the public that we have staffing? Are you going to let us know at the next meeting?
We'll be halfway through August.
August 12th, well, that's the first date.
Yeah.
They're going to work to the 12th, right?
Yeah.
So on the meeting on the 13th, you'll let us know for sure?
Staff, what?
Staffing, yeah. And that way then-
So I know the pools are good about getting information out on their Facebook page to staff.
Yeah, but that, I'll let, no.
You'll confirm it at that meeting one way or the other?
Confirm.
Check Facebook.
Okay.
Okay, is that, as long as we're talking about the pool and the concessions, how are we doing? Because that was always a big point of conversation the last couple of years.
I think we don't have all the numbers ready yet because the, the income is, comes in before the expenses.
So Claire's well aware of what?
Oh yeah, she's been asking what she should be doing.
To close out what we have?
Yes. And stop ordering and so on.
And then the last thing is on the 2019 staffing, have you had those conversations? Do we know, I mean, before we let lifeguards go, did we get an idea of how many people will come back, Claire's coming back? Do we ask those questions?
We haven't asked those questions yet.
Well, since we had such a problem with the staffing this year, don't you think we should ask them? How do you guys feel about that?
I know most of your certificates are good for two years.
Yeah, I'm just saying to go ahead and find out how-
I would.
So that we know whether to start looking for guards in December or March, I mean-
I, oh, we will ask.
Okay, so I'd ask all of them, so we have a number going, coming, especially Claire too, because trying to find a pool manager would be difficult. The assistant manager was who?
Well, Claire and Stephanie are both co-managers. And then we had Gabby as the assistant manager.
So just especially those key manager positions to see if anyone would have a desire to come back.
Well, if we're not going to increase wages, I don't think we're going to get them back, so.
I think I have that in the budget to possibly increase wages.
So we'll have to have that discussion as well, you can find that out as well. All right, is that all about the pool?
Yes.
Okay, salt shed?
Okay, we had a street committee discussion. Basically, they tasked me to come up with some numbers for the salt shed. I don't have all the numbers back, but I wanted to talk about this, any, just to, to work it out, let you know what's going on. Gary basically came up with the size of the shed we could put in that would allow us to operate everything inside of the salt shed. That way it keeps all the salt in there and we can load and unload and keep it as much as we can from contaminating anything else. And that is a 60 by 80 salt shed with a completely open end on the northeast. And previous discussions, we talked about not having an open end on the northeast, but in this, the location we talked about, there are quite a few trees blocking the, from the north, so we felt it was, we'd be comfortable with it that way, that it wouldn't see all the elements that it would normally if, if there was nothing in front of it. Also, the plan would include, basically, the loader, when it's operational down there, would be, have a parking spot on the front side. So giving a 20-foot gap between the salt and the front of the salt shed also creates an overhang, so those elements still don't hit the salt as much as, as they might if it was all the way out. Also, in the 60 by 80, would include a 20-foot drive as it's laid out right now on the, towards the, on the left side of the, the salt shed. So a salt truck can come and dump and then our guys can come, come in and scoot it over to the, scoot it over to the salt pile. That way, we can unload inside because the salt trucks that are delivering are all belly dumped, so they don't, they come in, drive through, dump. And more than likely have to take multiple passes, but it'd all be inside and we'd move it over to, to the one side of the salt pile when they, when they come and deliver that. And then on the southwest side, the opposite end, there'd just be a garage door for them to go out. The rest of that would be wall. That way, we have a maximum amount of being able to stack up the salt.
Does the county have one like this?
There, I don't know what the county has. There is, if you've seen, if you've gone down 77, there's a similar design, not with the drive-through, down by the county line. All they're missing is a drive-through. They put an asphalt, they just put asphalt down and I think they dump outside and push in. But I don't, I haven't seen one where you put a drive-through yet.
So why did you come up with the drive-through?
So we, we could, so if we, if we went with working the sand out, or salt outside of the structure, we would have to file a permit with the state with a plan to mitigate any salt contamination into water runoff. As long as we keep everything under a roof, we are compliant with the state.
But we don't do that now.
We contacted KDHG over there.
Are we not compliant now?
No. We've got them involved.
If no one else has a drive-through, how is anybody compliant?
No, I'm not saying nobody else, I, I just haven't seen it.
Well, if you haven't seen it, I would assume that's a lot of cities that aren't compliant.
Not, they, maybe not. They might be compliant with a, with a permit. They might have their permit. And a plan. That's, I figure with a new building, we can make it pretty compliant without a permit.
I don't know, this drive-through seems kind of excessive, right? How do you guys feel about that?
They would have to dump it outside and then move it inside. They're trying to keep the salt, and I'm not, you know, they can scoop it up all they want, there's still going to be some salt there. But if they go through the drive-through, you're going to have to go through a couple, three times to get it and then you're where we're supposed to be instead of being outside, you know, where it could rain or whatever and move it out.
Where, where do they dump it now?
Um, what's it?
Elm Street.
Elm Street.
They dump it on Elm?
Yeah.
And they move it out so it's contaminated, based on what you're saying?
Yeah.
Theoretically, you'd have a permit.
Let's just say Elm Street does not ice over.
So, so how'd you get this to something? You don't know the city that does it this way?
It's, we're doing it, Gary actually, Gary, Gary's representative actually came up with this idea. Right now, we have a 30 by 30 salt shed. With this new design, we would have theoretically, full, let's see.
It's a 60 by 80?
We, bulk for salt, just for the salt itself. We would have, like a 40 by, 40 by 60 salt shed, salt area. So we're increasing our salt. And this is being built with, with the cement blocks, which I found out, if you buy them individually, they're about $55 a block. And I estimate it's about 175 blocks to build, to build this. The 55, they said was not their, their goal.
Is that a little bit expensive?
That's terrible.
Isn't it a little bit, a little bit expensive?
It would be, that's on the big money.
We're going to go for 10 blocks?
They're, they're two, as, as I understand them, they're two by six, two foot by six.
Five.
Five foot?
Two foot by, six foot by what?
Two by two by six.
Two by two by six, okay.
Well, we could check and see if it's cheaper to contract and have a heavy hauler do it.
Yeah, have a heavy hauler do it.
Might be easier in sending our crew to go back and forth.
Yeah.
But we have to also put a concrete street down there then? I mean, we have-
We would do an-
This is dirt, yeah.
Well, at least we do asphalt. We do at least asphalt to the entrance, everything else can be gone out. Because Gary's theory is as long as they hit asphalt the whole time before they, the loader hits asphalt the whole time, they're not giving any mud and stuff to, to the area.
How do you guys feel about that moment? Second and moment, I guess it's our first, we should have discussed that at the beginning. How do you like that location?
It's fallow, but we have to put a base down before it's put the asphalt down?
We, just a compacted dirt.
We don't think of asphalt, but it'd have to be.
Six.
That would be sufficient.
So why, why aren't we putting it on the same block as our current salt shed on the southwest corner, that forty block? Why aren't we putting it there?
It's not enough for the building to that size.
Not enough for a building to drive through?
I thought maybe we'd want that space in the future for something else with the proximity, whereas in the salt shed, that proximity would be as big of a deal.
So you don't have a cost? Well, I guess I should say, what do you, what do you, best you guys feel about moment, second and moment? Did you guys drive down there? You have it all marked off. Do you like it?
It's meant we have that we're not using.
And it's closer to where the equipment's at, not driving all over town, over one area to another, it's closer to the city building. And that, that one, and I did go look on the line that it would almost be connected to the shop. And I talked to Dave about that and I said, well, even, even if it all of it being separated, you're going to get some salt. Salt will get in there and it's going to erode the building next door. And he said, yeah. And I said, are we going to have to have the cost because, to treat that so it doesn't get that erosion? And he said it probably would be a good idea because he discussed another building that we buy, the other salt shed that they had to reassemble.
Which one was that?
The street shed.
The street shed?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. On the south side?
Southwest corner.
Yeah, where they park the salt shed.
South corner?
Yeah.
Not southeast?
Southwest.
Southwest corner?
Just inside the double door, yeah.
And that was contamination from the salt shed that we have now?
No, the salt trucks.
Salt trucks in there.
Because they park it there.
We had to replace, yeah, we had to replace all the tin and stuff.
No, not the, just where they go and park them. They don't go from the top.
You mean just where the, our salt trucks-
Yeah, where we park, where we, yeah, where we park them inside the, inside that.
Now the blocks and the cost is somewhere around $1,000.
Just the blocks themselves.
And then do you have any estimate for the rest of the roof and the-
The last estimate I got for a roof was about $14,000. It'd probably be a little bit more since I'm dreaming about a different size of shed, but probably not much more. So, let's say 15, 16,000 dollars. Because the roof is basically, depending on whichever style we go with, is either, well, arch, but the material is either the, either a metal or a, or metal supports with a fabric, depending on which one's ever better for salt.
So how do you guys feel about the drive-through?
I just don't think that we, we're going to be, there's no way we can break some of that out on the tire or tool or whatever, but I think we're just dumping it out the front and pushing it in. I don't know. Unless we're going to extend the asphalt all the way out there to the dunk area and then pushing it, but I just, it's contamination, it's just a salt issue.
It takes three quarters of the block and they dump it now on the street.
How long's it taking to move it?
Half hour, four to five minutes? It's a pain to put, push it behind the building.
Well, they're still going to have to use that half an hour to move it, but we're already dumping it. Well, do you want him to come back with an estimate of what it's going to cost, total cost, asphalt, building, whatever, the next step? You guys want to proceed with, assuming that's the location and the design? Okay, consensus of consent, a creative estimate.
Yes, and I think I put somewhere in my caveat that the blocks, I've already talked with a local provider, which, our local cement provider said they don't make these blocks, so they recommended going over the hand of them because they make a lot. The challenge, I talked to them and they said they don't, if we were to order this amount, it wouldn't be this year. So we'd be working at status quo as to that. But if we were-
I'm sorry, what did you just say? You said they wouldn't have it for this year?
They said with the amount they have on hand and the amount they have on order, if we put the order in now, we wouldn't have it until next year.
2019.
2019.
Okay. Is there, can you check elsewhere?
I can check, I can check elsewhere.
Would you please check elsewhere?
At the, at the very minimum, I would, I would highly recommend if we're going to go through with this, we, we at least put the base down, put the asphalt and, and the first layer of blocks in the ground so we're ready to go for next year. But that's a discussion.
So you'll come back with the cost, including the street asphalt?
You're going to have special orders on those blocks too, and usually half blocks and stuff like that when you start building.
There's some places that specialize just in that kind of work. I know they're going down by, I believe it's area down by Salina.
We should just cross- Wouldn't you just cross hatch, so you start, um, one more?
Yeah, but at two by five, you're still gonna have to put, you send, uh, on an end, stack on top of it again.
Wouldn't it, it's two by, two by six, wouldn't it, wouldn't you stagger it? So you, you get the, the end on the corner?
Running joint.
Yeah.
Do you, do you put a liner down?
Just the asphalt, no.
Asphalt?
Just asphalt. The, we, I initially said cement, but, um, our practice with cement is not to put salt, um, for five years, uh, because it'll, it might, uh, uh-
So you're putting asphalt in seven?
Yes, yeah, that'll be the base of everything.
And you don't need a liner?
No.
Because I saw, I looked at those years ago, they had liners.
No, this one, it would just be the asphalt. Six inches of asphalt.
But we probably should get a quote anyway.
Right.
Or two quotes anyway.
For-
For, for the concrete block?
Concrete block, okay.
Well, I mean, we usually do for things.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. All right, next item?
Okay, next item is just some more, uh, not asking for any action or anything like that. This is just more information. Uh, I've talked with Alito, Illinois, and Seward, Nebraska about their experiences with Blue Stem Energy Solutions. Uh, Alito is just three months into their consulting, consulting with Blue Stem, and the city administrator reports nothing but a positive experience regarding their interactions. Uh, they altered their agreement to be a one hundred and eighty day consulting contract, or I think that's, I think that's six months, uh, rather than a year. Uh, the city of Alito also was approached by other companies, uh, that did the same thing as Blue Stem, but decided to work with Blue Stem due to their better customer service. Uh, the project they are looking at, uh, is a solar array that would hook, uh, into their local substation to offset their, uh, the city's power usage. It also looks like some of the local businesses are going to participate in the project to offset the, the energy usage, their energy usage. Um, uh, city of Alito basically is like us in that we are not an electric, we don't provide the electricity. Um, uh, but, in their state, uh, so for instance, we couldn't do what they're doing necessarily in hooking directly into the substation to offset our costs, uh, just because of state laws and how, uh, uh, state of Illinois, uh, has a net metering, uh, uh, allowance, uh, so they basically get the credit back on their bill. Um, we do not have that ability. Uh, so that's, that's their different project.
Yet.
Yet, yes, that's true. Um, and then, uh, I also talked with the city administrator, uh, for Seward, Nebraska. Uh, uh, he also had nothing but positive things to say about Blue Stem. He also had experience working with Blue Stem, uh, when he was the, uh, with the city of Beatrice as their city attorney. Uh, the project in Beatrice failed, uh, due to public opinion of not wanting windmills around town. Um, in Seward, uh, they, uh, built a large two-megawatt, uh, windmill, just as you see, uh, and, uh, the wind farms down the way. Um, and, um, uh, for this process, uh, Blue Stem organized all the public relations and, uh, would talk with any, uh, to anyone who wanted to know more information about, uh, all throughout the project. Uh, when it comes to construction, it was always on time and they had a good professional crew. Um, I've only found, uh, through conversations with, um, Alito, uh, is actually how I found, uh, one of the other, uh, companies that did exactly what Blue Stem does, uh, which is AMP Energy. Uh, it looks like they are out of Canada with opposite Denver and New York. Um, the report that I got from the city administrator of Alito is that they are extremely pushy in their attempt, uh, to sell their services. I did contact them and they are looking, uh, from my call, uh, they're looking at whether or not they even wanna, in our state of Kansas, uh, to do any projects. Uh, so, and that's, that's the information that I have found so far.
You know, in the first paragraph, you said, "The city of Alito has, was approached by other companies, but the only one you found was AMP Energy."
They mentioned another one that I couldn't, and they, they apologized. They didn't have any contact information because, uh, they didn't like their way they were being treated by these said companies. Uh, so, they didn't take any information regardless. I had to search for AMP Energy and I looked for, I think there was another one called Clear Water. Uh, Clear Water, um, I'm not gonna say Clear Water Energy, but I tried to search for their information. Uh, and I came up with a website that was extremely outdated and no phone number to contact them. Uh, and the last time they updated was like two thousand thirteen, I think. But, uh, so I, I didn't have any luck, uh, maybe I was looking at the wrong information, but I couldn't, I couldn't find them anymore.
And you didn't ever find another city besides Alito that would be similar to Marysville?
Uh, no. Uh, in fact, Seward was the, the next one. I talked with, um, Blue Stem, uh, and they said this was the next one, and their six thousand, population's six thousand.
And they're doing windmills, huh?
They, they did one, one windmill. Uh, and, uh, it's, I think it's right on the edge of town. Um, and all, all he, what his main focus was that, um, that with the unpopularity of possibly having a, what some people might consider an eyesore, like sitting right outside their window, uh, Blue Stem, uh, smoothed everything out that possibly, uh, that possibly could've happened. And that, I mean, and he said anybody, or he'd be willing to talk to anybody if anybody had any questions about Blue Stem, especially since he had two experiences, uh, with them, uh, both in a larger setting and, and not Seward, Nebraska.
Craig, did you even get this, that agreement?
Yeah, I, I don't see anything specifically problematic. I think I would probably just ask, I doubt that they have an objection to it, to add some sort of out clause if it runs afoul of state, local law, or even maybe pre-existing agreements with other energy companies. That was my initial concern. I don't know that that's gonna be the case in any way.
So, um, at this point, also needs to put those two, or bring those to Blue Stem to modify the agreement? Is that what you're asking? Or are you gonna give a proposed redraft or?
Well, I, however the council wants me to do it, I can work with also put some language together over propose, provision, but in that spirit.
So, uh, you guys wanna proceed with this, with the Blue Stem proj- project?
I think it would be good, but has anybody read the Solar Commosphere rate increase? West Star is talking about for, um, any cities that produce their, some of their own electricity, putting them in a different category.
Oh, for filling?
Where y'all pass this on down.
Did you just find that?
That was today's paper.
So, can, I guess they can do that claim?
Well, I don't know. Um, if that has to happen once the contract runs, and then there's too many negotiations or?
Well-
Have to go through the case and pay.
What they would, what they would be doing, what Blue Stem would be doing, is seeing if this would be cost-effective to us. That's the, that's the first part. So if there is something that says our rates will increase because we produce more energy and the numbers don't match out, we don't have to, we don't have to do anything.
Well, then we would have to, um, have the possible change in rates built into the cost benefit analysis?
Yes. Yeah, because if they have a renewal or something like that, they, uh, and that's a, a definitely a discussion item, uh, to make sure we're, that our rates don't increase if we, if we-
Their pros, they should be aware of this and-
Yes.
Seeing that factor in.
Yeah.
I think the fear or possible concern was that they, they've not done this yet in a Kansas municipality with utilities, um, in the state of Kansas, contracts, governed by Kansas law, you know, which might have some differences between Illinois and Nebraska. Uh, so, yeah, I'm also confident with that, that's how they operate in Kansas.
Do you wanna take that newspaper article and make sure whatever garbage needs to be in there?
Yep.
Yeah. So you want, uh, Craig to go ahead and draft up a new agreement with whatever concerns he has to propose?
With the out clause, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to look into it.
Okay, so, since I came the last time and shared, you know, you guys are pretty confident you wanna proceed with it?
It's not, it's not gonna cost the same thing to have them do the study.
It could potentially save us quite a bit.
Or could.
Potentially, potentially.
And one of the things that, um, Alito taught me is that they are amenable to, to changes. Um, they, like I said, they shorten the timeframe from a year to half a year. Uh, so I think they're willing to work with us, uh, if that is, is the case. I mean, if you, you guys are comfortable with a year, if you want nine months, uh-
It was initially a year. Do you wanna change it?
Yeah, I mean, if, if they do the study and we decide that we don't wanna do anything, I don't see us deciding we're gonna do something within a year or then.
So the consensus is to go ahead and have, uh, our city attorney redraft it with his proposed changes and bring it forward? And do you want him to go ahead and pass it to Blue Stem to make sure they're okay? Before it comes to us? Okay.
Do you want Blue Stem to connect them?
Um, if, if they're in agreement with his revision.
Okay.
Are you guys okay, next meeting?
Nope.
Here's okay? Can you do that timeframe, Craig? All right, next item?
Okay, uh, we've talked about this previously, but I wanted to get something, uh, the topic's nailed down. Um, Transportation Alternative Grant, uh, they're accepting applications, uh, until September first. Uh, it was previously discussed that, uh, the Brick Street right in front of, uh, what was Cromie's Market was a priority. Uh, but the last time we discussed this, uh, there was some support, uh, putting an application in for Seventh Street Corridor, uh, as far as bringing the, the bike trail into town. Uh, we could turn an application for both if the council wants. Uh, I guess, what, what direction do you guys wanna go? Um, uh, with the idea that, um, that whatever project, they, they wanna see a, a commute, something that actually connects a whole thing. Uh, they don't like, they don't like it when you go, uh, "We only wanna do a hundred feet of this," uh, and it connects to nothing.
First question would be, is if we do both, does it weaken our argument for either?
That I don't know. I th- I think they look, um, look at them, and they give them a point system. Uh, so they look at, they'll look at, at an application and go, "Do you have, one of the topics is history. Do you have a trail going through? Do you have, uh, this and that?" And I think each project is based on its own merit. I have seen some communities, um, get two projects on the TA grant.
What's your deadline on that?
September first.
So we'd have to have, we'd have to have a design for Seventh Street?
Not a, not a design, I mean, we would have to have an estimate on how much it's gonna cost in a preliminary, uh, design, yes.
And the funding date is when?
The nineteen, uh, not, I have to see.
Is it twenty nineteen, July one, or is it past that date?
I wanna say it'd be twenty twenty, so-
July one?
Yeah, uh, twenty nineteen, July one, so twenty twenty in, in state fiscal year.
Yeah, it seems like we wanna differently get that in.
They do two years, um, at a time.
I would suspect, I mean, and I imagine you could make a good grant application argument for either one, something on the Seventh Street Corridor would be previous investment in the Seventh Street Corridor, and then the other outside groups doing private fundraising. I imagine the state looks kindly on the, on the idea of, you know, these other groups, be it a trail group, the depot group, or whomever, doing efforts, not asking for state funds, working in the same project as far as, like you said, tying it in. Because the state would look at it as all these entities together, and you could get letters of support.
Or to counterbalance that, they could look at multiple entities as an unknown. Um, and, and that's, that's highly possible.
I, I just, I know on like the national, a lot of national grant projects, they, they really like multiple, um, entities backing it. I mean, longstanding entities, none of these are flash in the pan, they've all been around a handful of years, but as far as letters of support, I know like Alcoa Springs has gotten some grant help, but thanks to different entities being involved and being tied in. I could see your argument, but I didn't, I don't know if the state looks at it differently than the feds do.
They really look, I, they probably look at it differently each way, but I, the way I've seen it is they like, they like that one person that's in charge because they know that they can sign that dotted line and know it's gonna happen.
So do you have the specs still for, on Broadway? Do we have everything still in place for the project?
For, uh, Tony's been working on, Tony Dever's been working on that application just in case, because he had all the numbers ready to go.
Because we already submitted that once, didn't we? Didn't we have the estimate?
It was drawn up.
The, I think the estimate was drawn up.
But you don't think we ever submitted it?
It might've been a part of an application. I think that's the way Tony, Tony put it. Uh, it was part of an application and, uh, it was a multi, uh, they included other things.
Was, was the Seventh Street Corridor crossing of Broadway part of that project?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, so asphalt home?
That was gonna be the next, uh-
I think it was.
Thing I brought up, is he says if we can include something like that, that would possibly strengthen the application. If we were just gonna do, uh, in front of Cromie's Market, uh, and that hump right there, uh-
That would help our project?
That would help, because it connects the trail. It, it does the trail.
It's a dual use?
Yeah, it's a dual use, uh, it's history, it's Brick Streets.
It's a lot of things happening down there.
It's a lot of things. It's previous investment, yes.
So were you gonna have him include that little spot on Seventh Street too?
Yes, that, that hump. I, I would recommend doing that, and if we wanna submit both, I, I mean, we can look at how much it's gonna cost to do, uh, the, the trail if we want.
So are we, you're adding the hump to Cromie's project?
Yes, yeah. Because I think that would, I think that'd be all, a good project.
Okay. So if we're, if, if we're, are you guys all in agreement, we should do that? We should file that, submit that one for sure?
Yes.
Yeah. So we, we wanna submit this. Second one is, um, you guys wanna go ahead and try to put something together to put an estimate? I mean, if the funding's not gonna come to twenty twenty, and it's twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, we better get it in.
Yeah.
So, um, so, uh, if that was true, the street committee would have to meet and look at the plans that we had previously and bring something to council by the thirteenth.
Yeah, I can, I can have Tony Dever run on that too, to, to give us our basically idea, give us ideas of what the application needs, uh, to move forward with that too.
Do you want to have that to the thirteenth as well? Have them bring something forward at least to look at? The street committee to work with Tony Dever? Is that a consensus of council?
I guess he already got something about in front of Cromie's.
Yes.
He should have the, he should have the other one too.
He has the numbers.
Because remember we said it was gonna cost like eight hundred thousand dollars with all the infrastructure?
Just give him a thumbs up in the back, so.
Oh.
I didn't know he was there. He shouldn't be listening to me volunteering out this stuff.
So Tony, come up here just for a minute. I didn't know you were here.
You shouldn't give thumbs up.
Sorry, Tony. We're glad you're here. Um, didn't we pull all that stuff together for Cromie's Block with all the infrastructure that, um, the utility infrastructure? And didn't, didn't we have like the two half blocks between center and Broadway included in that?
Yes.
Okay. So it's center to Broadway plus the block between fifth?
I don't know, how has it held up there so far?
The, Gary says it's kinda, like you said, on the, on, with, uh, it's washed down to some of the cold nicks that was there before that was patched over that.
I assume it's been laid on top of the cold nicks, but it was in the part of it.
Yeah, we were just doing what we were told, to test it on the dump road.
Everybody's, there was a petition went around and then all the landowners out there, except for one.
I don't, if they wanna sign a petition, then put it out there over the concerns of the other experts. I don't have a problem with that as long as they sign some kind of a waiver.
Who's the expert? Who's the expert?
Not me, but other people are. I mean, I'd, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see how it holds up first. I mean, I don't wanna go putting something out there and making a mistake like it's happened before, different things that we've done with roads around here, and then two years later be spending more money on top of- And then two years later be spending more money on top of trying to fix a mess. That's not, I just don't want to go down that road is, is all I'm concerned about.
Yes.
Nothing's good if they don't get maintenance. And if it's put on there and handled right, experts say that it'll work. And all the people, the gentlemen have petition done by. The only person that didn't sign in that area was, he was taking an expert's advice and it was Councilman Vaughn. But the only reason he didn't sign.
Which one was that? Well, I guess, I guess maybe they don't want to know, but I'm trying to make it in that area that I know, that I've been talking to.
He kind of said that you were an expert.
Oh, I'm not an expert, but I, but I did work road construction for two years and worked with asphalt. I know the difference between AC-10 and, and, you know, cold mix or, um, in Millings. I, I'd just be hesitant to throw in buildings on there. If, if they're that dry, you're not really going to get any benefit over what you would get if you just threw some more rock and stuff on top of it. It's not.
Where you eliminate the dust.
Eh, the stuff they were throwing on, it was pretty dry and, I mean, it was not.
So what, what is our downside? What's our downside?
When you blade it this fall, it's all going to end up in the grater ditches. If it doesn't compact here to the road. I don't know what they used to blade that road with, Terry. Do they use a maintainer or do they use one of those trucks?
I couldn't hear you.
The road in front of your house, do they use a maintainer or do they use one of the trucks?
They haven't done anything in front of my road except use the grater.
No, I mean, when they, in the winter time, when they, when the snow's out there, how do they remove it?
I really don't know. We haven't had that much snow in the last couple of years. See what they had to do.
So, so are you wanting to make a motion to go ahead and do that?
I'm not wanting to do anything. I, I, all I wanted to do is provide the information because these people all want it done. And if it's set this, everybody doesn't want to do it because they don't think it'll work and they've never done it. I don't think it's being fair to these people that are paying the taxes and living here.
So do you, to follow up, who made the comment that they wanted to sign something to say?
That would be.
If it doesn't make it better, but, so. Can it make it worse? That's my question. Can it make it worse?
I'm not an authority, but I've had about 10 people, including a gentleman that runs Hall Brothers, says it couldn't be anything but better than what you have now. Rowdy Bush said that. And I've had several other people that are here in that business have said the same thing, including a gentleman who's doing a lot of construction for us here in town. Doesn't know why we haven't done it soon.
I know we have to do it while it's hot, so. I guess the prudent, not being an expert in Millings or asphalt or anything like that, but being a, let's call me an expert student. To put a material through all seasons would be the best way to test it. Now, we may not have the best test site, but that's the one we were told to put it on. And that was the recommendation that we put it on the dump road to test it. But to see how a material reacts over the year would be the most prudent choice, I think.
So we wait? Is that the final answer?
Sure, that's what everybody wants to do.
There is, there is also, we don't have the best Millings. The Millings we have came from a two-inch reclamation, which any expert will tell you, the, the top two inches don't have the most oil. It's where it's dried out. We have, in our near future, a nice long stretch of highway that can go really deep with asphalt. And I've seen it a foot, I don't know, two feet?
Two feet places.
That would be probably.
What are we talking about?
Seventy-seven rolls out.
They didn't change that in it from asphalt to concrete. They got to put that asphalt somewhere. Not saying taking it all, but that's got a lot more oil in it than what we have right now. If you wanted to test something on an actual road that people will use every day. And the best case scenario is that they have more oil in it, that may be a suggestion.
Okay. Go on.
Mayor, you asked me to bring up the, the alley behind the credit union. And my concern was we didn't ask for bids. And should we ask for bids?
So she brought that up today. She said, well, in the last week, last meeting, we approved it. And at the time, we said, we, he gave us a bid. We asked for an estimate, he got him with a bid, we felt like he was now disadvantaged compared to other people. So we went ahead and accepted his bid. Darlene asked why we didn't have more than one bid. And I said, well, I guess if we wanted to, we could reject all bids, which would be his, and rebid it. And it's strictly you guys, up to you guys.
So is he, what's he getting out, other than beyond this? He's there doing construction, doing construction. I did get a call also about not doing bids. Yeah. I mean, this, this is what they want, you know? I don't know, how, how does our mayor feel about it?
Well, we did ask him to come back with a cost estimate, is the thing. And he came back with one and then now he's in a disadvantage. I think, I probably think that's related to the fact that you aren't having a bid.
We have, we have had something like this happen before and we asked for a refund. Since it's such a large project.
It's 40,000.
So, so what, what, when you said we've done this before, what are you referring to?
So, I, some piece of equipment. We had somebody, you know, put their bid or estimate in and then we went out and asked for bids. Even if we're deadly late maybe.
Well, we rebid the AD sidewalk project because it came out above the estimate. I don't know, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to, so we made a motion to accept it. So, did he present the, the exception was it was supposed to be made out of the S. Did he present that to us?
Yes.
And have we signed it?
I don't think there was a, a, I didn't think, we haven't signed it yet. I mean, that's, that's the difference between, not multiple either way, but the, it's kind of a different situation that this, this has already been accepted. And again, not siding with either side, but just you, you've already accepted whatever we submitted. I don't know how, I mean, just, just slightly different.
It is kind of slightly different than the ADA's because we didn't accept the bid. We rejected it at the front end. Where here, we accepted the bid, you know.
I'm not even thinking second thoughts.
So we're just going to let it be, move forward?
Starting from on the state.
Starting somewhere.
Okay. I did have a note here. You know, I was driving down Broadway on Saturday and there weren't any cars. So, but we have a lot of weeds on our sidewalks in downtown Marysville. Who is responsible for that?
The concern.
The concerners? And we have a lot of weeds between our curb and gutter and our streets. Who's responsible for that?
The, oh, in the streets?
Is that the city?
Um, we tried to take care of that one.
Okay. So have you noticed the weeds on downtown, you guys? In downtown Marysville? Yeah. We have a lot of weeds there.
We tried to mitigate the ones in the tree spots we just screwed up. I think those are nicely cleared out.
Can we send out a, a notice to say please? Yeah, I mean, for the, for our businesses on downtown? I mean, it looks kind of bad. You guys, how do you feel?
Well, there, there used to be, you know, they're calling it sparklers? Sparkles?
Marysville Main Street used to do it.
Yeah. Whenever, whenever they tell people, I think they've been having trouble pulling in people to volunteer.
Well, I got tired of doing it because the Main Street people, business people didn't do it. And so I used to do two blocks, one side, do one side and the other side. Well, I kind of feel like maybe the business people should do their own, maybe.
I know that the school, occasionally a teacher or some program at the school will have kids come down and help with that sort of thing. Because kids can do it faster and more efficiently than adults can sometimes. But I think we can probably see if we can reach out and find somebody willing to take it on as just a special project. We'd be glad to get them recognition, I'm sure.
Some of the businesses do a really good job. And there's others that don't do it at all. And I feel like, you know.
Well, at this point in time, since school's not in session, do you want to go ahead and just send a notice saying please keep your weeds down on the sidewalk and see what happens?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Is it going to hurt? Is that going to hurt you?
Yeah. It's just, you know, we, in our downtown area, I was just shocked how many weeds we had on Broadway. Okay, so you'll send a notice out?
But then there are some, there are some empty buildings downtown too. That's the problem right now.
But then they also, yeah, there's still people that own them and they're.
I understand.
Okay.
On the street too, the new stoplight on 14th Street.
Is working.
It is, but I don't know if it's working consistently. You know, sometimes it takes longer than other times. Is there a timer on it or?
You mean for the north-south?
It measures the traffic. I've been through it a couple of times. Usually when I make it through, it's about five to six seconds on changing. If it detects more traffic down the way or an interval.
20th Street does that too. It's like got some sort of algorithm.
Yeah.
Where it's calculating constantly counting cars.
Its main source is the east-west and if it sees more vehicles coming, it's going to stall. It's going to stop. Or it's going to not change as fast as it would when nobody's.
Whereas the old one, I think, it just, it was blanked it if there's a car over the magnet.
It's, yeah.
Because I know I waited there for like two minutes today, but you know, it was also.
It seems quicker with pedestrians.
Did you time it out?
It was right about 3:30 when the Landers crew was coming down and you know, the traffic was moving.
Two minutes?
Well, like I said, it determines by the traffic.
There's a lot of cars coming down the road here.
It wants, it wants to be the most efficient. So the most efficient is moving more cars at once.
Wow.
Like I said, it wasn't, it wasn't that bad.
The problem is when Catholic school starts, although you said that flow would back up and then it would read that there's.
It would read that there's more cars, so it would live long enough.
More than just one?
Yep.
So there's no way to read, to adjust it or anything?
Not that I know of right now. It's, it's trying to be as efficient as possible.
But I know later today, when I pulled up to it, I pulled up, you know, before and it flipped right away into.
Yeah, and then when I came to, I went through it and there was no traffic. But, but I had, I had a complaint with somebody who had to sit there for quite a while and they wondered what was going on.
Other than Kevin?
I've noticed too on the north-south, it stays open shorter. It always stays open exactly as long as needed. It doesn't sit as long. So it's actually a little faster that way.
It changes.
I've been watching it too.
Can we bring up, I've been noticing, and I'm on the highway side and the semis. And I don't know if it's the timing that's going on with the lights. But I'll tell you what, some of those semis are just floating and that isn't. And it's not just coming off the hill. Because they like come off the hill and then if they see that light screen on eight, they're flying it by the time. They're going past my place and when they come off the bridge, you know, they're supposed to drop to 35. And if they see that light screen, they ain't stopping. And I, I'm just real aware of it. Fortunately, I don't have a lot of older people that come tottering across the highway, which I, in the old, other days, what I had more that, you know, when there wasn't quite as much parking over there because of other businesses. I would actually walk across the street and bring them over. Because I just couldn't stand the idea of watching a splat going on.
I think they, their timing, I think it's some of the regular ones, they kind of know how to time it. As somebody who's driven through these lights thousands of times, you kind of figure out when which one changes. They know that if they have to be on it to make both, and that's what they're doing.
Yeah. And I'm, you know, I got.
They do the same coming from the south.
Oh, I know. I, I know that, but I was just really, there's, especially I've noticed, and I'll check, I'll look at the license plate and they're out of town.
Okay, really doing this. We're going to move on. Water, wastewater? You got that plane figured out?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We got to do parks then.
And did you replace that waste toilet at Lakeview?
Um, no, we got to order, or get that in.
I see they've got a couple manholes set.
Yes, yeah, they had at least three and they were ordering on four today, I think.
Okay. I just know that little waste toilet's been broken a long time. Okay, Parks and Rec? Cemetery and Airport? Waste and Fire? Admin and Finance? So, um, you have admin and finance questions? Darlene, do you want to report or Terry, you want to report here or we can report?
I just thought, Madam Mayor, I just thought, I mean, we had the Administration and Finance Committee meeting. That the questions that we talked about that should have been addressed before the whole town exploded over this, this stall. Because those were questions we have to find answers to before anything can be proceeded on. It had nothing to do with anything else, but we could get the answers from those questions from the attorney. That, that was what we wanted to get. That's what's put me in the agenda.
At that meeting, he also presented some questions for the insurance agent and we sent those to Jim. And it was saying, does the city's insurance probably cover the installation use of temporary disc golf course? It says, no, we do not cover the installation. So that seems we at least want to have waivers. We should have waivers anyway. When we have volunteer work at, at the parks, we probably should have a volunteer waiver. And then it says, as for the youth participants in athletic activities are excluded. So that, and I asked him specifically about spectators and they said, on the spectator side, the participants would be responsible. And then it says, is damage to the property covered by cars and motorhomes? And they said, no, this would fall on the purchaser, not the city. And then the question was, will city insurance still be affected considering that the course was not designed by a professional? And it says, um, uh, these are course, there are course recommendations and resources available at the Professional Disc Golf Association website. While not specifically excluded, we would strongly prefer that they comply with the rules and regulations. And then she goes on to say, Nikki Cisneros is the Commercial Alliance underwriter. Actually, this was in your info package, did you guys read this? And so it says, we always want our insurance to do the most they can to put safety first. So I asked her a further question to say, um, if we, so they're saying they would highly recommend, as she's in PDGA recommendations. And I said, well, if we don't, well, we'd be held negligent. And she said, only if a loss occurs that can be directly and irrefutably attributed to the design of the course or maintenance of the course, that we would be held negligent. And then, um, again, she made a comment, again, we strongly encourage the city council, make sure they are following the guidelines available to them. PDGA has put these resources up for a reason, for the safety of everyone involved. So that's from the insurance agent. So those were the ones that we sent directly to them to see what they would say, the insurance agents said. So these were the other questions that were brought forward at the meeting, having to do with, you know, risk management and insurance and our city code or whatever. And that's why the Finance and Admin Committee discussed them. I think included in the packet is a USDA agreement. And I asked Debbie regarding number three. It says, uh, they have exclusive use. It says USDA agrees that the use of the facilities, as talked about in the drainage area, is not exclusive except for the time scheduled for use by USD 364. So I asked Debbie, "Do we have a scheduled use for that time?" And she said, "No, we never have." So, um... I guess, you know, the question posed was this agreement could be modified or amended to include the disc golf indemnification against, for the, if they're going to use a course, you know, we would want to have them indemnify the city for that as well. Then the volunteer waiver, again, it's probably something we should have had anyway prior to this for like painting the decor or whatever. And then negligence versus gross negligence. And then installation agreement. So a full disclosure kind of thing. I guess the full disclosure, some of the questions was, is the city obligated to disclose to our insurance company that the disc golf course does not meet? So I guess we kind of did that indirectly when I asked that second question. Is the city obligated to disclose to sponsors that the course does not meet PDGA? And does the city obligated to disclose to USD 364 that it does not meet PDGA or disc golf park safety regulations? So... Those were questions posed, kind of like risk management and our other agreements and contracts that we have regarding city park. And, uh, I'm speaking on behalf, I'm not, you want to talk on the Finance and Admin meeting? Who is there? Terry?
Yeah, Terry.
Darlene?
I'm a lot of these questions.
And Diane? So...
And Craig, did you already have a copy of these questions?
Yeah. Yeah.
The committee suggested that Craig, you know, look into these. And we proposed that Craig look into these questions.
It's kind of just like a risk management thing, you know? Like, just to make sure we're covered. And what we, I think the real thing is that we have to make sure that we're not contradicting this agreement. I guess, you know, the main thing to look at is that the reason why the Finance and Admin Committee looked at it was because it had to do with contracts and risk management or city code, insurance, whatever. It would fall under the auspices of the Finance and Admin. And that's why it didn't go to Parks and Rec. So with that being said...
Madam Mayor, I would just like to say that maybe from now on, if we're going to have a committee meeting, that it be stated what purpose a committee meeting is going to be for.
Like I said earlier, it was given to Debbie. I mean Debbie, and I don't mean to throw you under the bus Debbie, but it was given to Debbie and she makes the call.
Well, a lot of times it doesn't state that on the committee meetings too. I guess I got the email and I guess I just assumed that a Finance and Admin meeting would want to be about disc golf was what I was under.
I can understand...
I thought it was about the finalizing of the budget.
I can understand how this could fall under the auspices in this situation. But like Jason said, it'd be one of those where to have some sort of outline of an agenda, kind of like, these are the topics the committee's going to meet on.
Yeah.
That way, if somebody else outside the committee has input or just wants to know or whatever, it might be good. That way, we other, people who aren't on that committee, it's council people, don't feel blindsided by it.
And I don't think it was meant to do that. I think more than anything, it was just, the information was given to Debbie. Debbie sent the call out. I mean, we have other meetings that they haven't, when we sent a call out for the street, I don't know what the street said. We were going to discuss, it's all shedded it?
I guess what I'm asking is, do we need to have a policy changed to require that there be? Because every time a meeting is called, whoever called the meeting knows what they're calling the meeting for. And then it needs to be stated so residents and constituents that are concerned about an issue know that, hey, I should probably show up at that meeting.
We don't, I mean, obviously, I think it would have to apply, of course, to every committee. And it just, it might be good policy. That way, nobody feels like anybody's being seen.
Yeah. I just want, you know, just for the up and up, that information was given to her. So it wasn't like a secret. But, um, so Debbie, in the future, you need to list that on the agenda for the meeting. What's that? Well, she makes the call. She puts the call out on the committee. How, who else would do that?
I am.
So when people make a call, a committee meeting, everything goes through Debbie. That's her responsibility.
I'm just saying, as a constituent, if an issue that you were concerned about got moved on a meeting and then next week there was a meeting from the committee that you wouldn't really think would have a lot to do with that issue. And then it wasn't stated with the issue, what issue was going to be discussed. And then two pages trying to sabotage the thing comes out of the committee that you might be concerned about.
You sabotaged our ad hoc committee. But anyway, the committees cannot make a decision. We make recommendations.
That is true.
And also, we, I have been on a committee where we were discussing the contract. And we had a whole bunch of people, we couldn't even discuss because they were talking the entire time. And actually, the, if they're, you know, the citizens can come and listen, but unless we call on them, they are not going to comment.
But we can't just not notify them so that we can have some peace quiet during our committee meetings. So the whole purpose of being open is that people can come and see what's going on. Transparency.
They can listen quietly, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's our right.
I would just like to say that I spent last night looking up numbers and I spent most of today calling administrators from different facilities that have installed disc golf courses and parks administrators. I think I talked to 11 of them. And I had like three more that didn't get back to me. No negative comments. All of them said that they'd had nothing but good luck with it. Some of them crossed roads and a lot of them, a lot of them coincided next to walking and hiking trails. It had no issues. One, the only one was one of them, a disc had hit a house and the person that called, because the course was right next to residential property. And they had had problems with small sapling trees, people breaking branches off them. But we have that issue with kids in the park right now with the small trees. One of them actually made the comment that that was, that the disc golf was the easiest thing that he had to maintain in the park. And another one said that it was the least of all of his worries and concerns as far as all the things that he had to deal with with this park's departments.
Was this your report, Jason?
Yeah. And all the numbers are on there of all the people that I talked to.
Yeah.
You're free to call them. But none of them went through, I mean, I'm sure none of them had two pages presented of waivers and... I mean, if we want to go this route and require waivers for everybody that comes and works at the barbecue and the car shows and every volunteer we have, that's fine. But I don't know if we want every single time that we have an activity in this town, every single person that can show up and sign their three pages of legal forms before they go down there and donate their time to the city. I don't know if doing more obstacles in front of our volunteers is the route that we necessarily want to go. And it's up to the council to decide that.
And, you know, and back to what you said about committee meetings and transparency. I mean, the thing of it is, it's, I think in all government, it's not about impropriety. Sometimes it's about the appearance of impropriety. You know, it's that sunlight is the best disinfectant thing. The more open we are, the more open we seem and the more open we are, the better we're going to be regarded and the more people will trust us and won't second guess any decision we make. And that interaction that some people maybe feel is too much interaction, I think should be fostered because just like the volunteering, if we don't foster people being involved in almost every way, not without limit, then we're doing a disservice to the community. I mean, that's the way I look at it. I think we just really have to carefully make sure that everyone understands that we're trying to do the best and best we can with the most information we can get in the best possible manner. We have to be as transparent as possible.
So I guess the recommendation was from the Finance Committee was to present this to council and ask them if they wanted...
Answers, yes.
If, ask them if they wanted the city attorney to answer these questions, just so we know.
Well, some of these issues on here, we can take care of ourselves because it counts, it's a campaign. But the problem with the zero cost to the city, we could modify our motion and... Because if somebody's going to take it literally, no cost to the city means that most of the employees are going to have to finger to do anything, then we might modify the motion and allow some wiggle room there.
Yeah, I noticed in your report, it said one person, they said one person contracted that they, the people that put it in actually does the maintenance of it.
Yeah, one of them does. I can't remember which town that was. There was one of them that actually had an agreement.
That was from Council Group.
Yep. He said that he would recommend that, but he was the only one that they had an agreement with, with that group.
Craig, do you have any input on this?
Well, um... The negligence, gross negligence, I can tell you, number 11. Could the city be held liable for negligence, annual gross negligence, considering failure to follow basic safety recommendations? I mean, that's a really fact-based question. I can tell you that there's a recreational use immunity under the Kansas Court Play Act that where gross or warrants of negligence would be approved, the city would be liable for any damages with approximate costs. I mean, there's a lot of elements that have to be met. And it can't fall under any immunity for a city to be held liable for an injury that would occur on something like it. I can't tell you blanket why that no, no injury would create liability for the city in a disc golf course. You know, but that's, never give you a 100%. Absolute on anything. The individual council members, 12 and 13, generally there is an immunity for acting in the course of your duties legislatively as long as there's no malice or fraud in it. And that is towards municipal. Everybody's not necessarily to stay in a public municipal, that does apply. So I can answer those now. Some of these others, I think maybe are best practice questions, not legal requirements. I looked at the 12, Act 1 and 2 of the city code, I'm a little confused. Well, I think the city has quite a bit of leeway under that section to approve this. I don't think that it prohibits the approval of a disc golf course on public property. I don't read that there. I'm not sure of the question. I didn't quite understand if that is the question or if that is the question.
What do you think about the volunteers?
So, well, there's a couple issues. Volunteers could be covered under the Kansas Court Play Act, meaning that they would have personal immunity potentially. That's not really what the question is, is should they, should they sign a waiver?
And definitely cannot like their school and stuff here.
Well, and that's another thing is I think that if, admittedly, I'm not exactly familiar if this is being posed for the city park where, I didn't know until I read this, that it could incorporate some piece of land, that there's an inter-local government agreement including the school district. Best practice, they should be brought into the fold if there's an agreement that controls that piece of land. If I was their attorney, I would very much want and demand to be involved in that.
For numbers one to three, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. So we need to have...
You know, and to answer the first one, I would hope the city's going to honor an agreement that they've executed that hasn't been nullified or amended.
So we need to probably just make an amendment to have agreement and see if they're willing to work with that?
If necessary, yeah. Perhaps that is what would need to happen. Again, I haven't researched that much. This is the first I knew about that agreement. And I'm not entirely sure how it's going to be, how that area of land that is considered in that agreement is going to be used in a disc golf court. You can tell me if I'm wrong, but it has, the location of any of these holes actually been finalized?
Well, the proposed plan had one, one...
Okay. So I think that it sort of applies all three, the one, two, and three. I think that agreement, that needs, needs to be considered. How much it needs to be changed, hard to tell before.
I'm sorry, going back to number five, the volunteer site. You say best practice is to do what?
Well, when you, when it's asked, will the city require all volunteers to disc golf, could decide or release from liability for releasing the city of liability?
Yeah. I think that's what they're referring to.
But on the other hand, what would be different from that than going to the tennis courts and playing tennis? We have them sign a release to play tennis.
Are you, are we talking about participat- who are these volunteers?
They're installing the course. That's the difference.
That's, okay, that's...
These are the installation, not the fires.
Okay.
Well, I suppose it could be another level of protection to the city.
Do we have any kind of waiver for any volunteers on any city property, on any project? I mean, do we have something like that kind of out there in the, there that we're just not using? So all the volunteer work that's been done has been waiver-free as far as painting and...
Well, my kids have built two shelters here in the city.
I was going to say, I know there's been a lot of...
We've never had a, built a waiver or anything.
And I wonder how that works with like, things like the county helping us with the firing range and things? That wasn't a volunteer thing, but did they sign any kind of waivers there?
That would be different.
But that, but it's, it's in the ether of things that people are doing while paying them and they're not city employees.
I don't think that's volunteer.
That one was, that one was different.
Was it a contract?
I don't know if it's contract, but we worked in conjunction with the county.
Employee.
So in agreement, the employee was actually working on behalf of the county. Those employees were working on, so if they...
Competing.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And were authorized by the county. So they were doing work for the county. So they would have been covered under their own, just taking out a turn, really.
Well, I guess I go back to what the insurance lady said, Nikki Cisneros, that the volunteers wouldn't be covered on the installation. So, I mean, that's not a big deal if you guys want to do it.
I philosophically don't have any problem with us having some sort of waiver form for people, whether it's Leadership Marshall County or disc golf installers or, you know, anybody else doing volunteer work.
Mothers day, play monsters, whatever.
That's the thing is too, I wonder if then you, Kester House, Library, anywhere else we have volunteers.
We do have fourth graders come in and clean up the park after...
There's a question, did the school do that or do their parents have to sign off on that? The fourth graders?
We're covering them, yes. USD 364.
Well, we might want to add that to the agreement with the school though. I mean, as far as adding things to that, as far as if kids are going to come help you clean up the Chester block or whatever, because they've done that too. I'm just saying, if you want to make sure you're covered, you add that in, in the agreement we already have.
Okay. The whole full disclosure thing, I think they pretty much covered in their email bag. You guys have any, any questions?
And on the agreement, it says, do they throw javelins down there in the park? I've heard that they do, the schools throw javelins.
They said, I talked to the members and he said they are not going to be doing any.
I sent them an email.
Yeah. That's been resolved.
Because I heard they did.
They did.
Okay.
So, um, the negligence, gross negligence, you say there's a recreational use exception, so we don't have to worry about those?
Well, yeah, one exists, if it's being applied. I mean, I can't tell you that it will absolutely be applied, okay? But this would be one, it's clearly a recreational use. Um, and so gross negligence standard would have to apply.
And then the temporary disc golf baskets, I don't think they're using a temporary, are they?
Temporary as in not putting any concrete in, is, is-
With their actual baskets.
Their actual baskets.
So, you're gonna have actual baskets there, but not like the-
The, the, my thought on that was using the existing baskets and moving them around if the volunteers were willing to do that.
So it wouldn't cost any extra, you know, buy baskets, then, wouldn't eventually be used at all?
But those baskets aren't comparable to, I would say, the standard basket. I think they're smaller, aren't they?
I'm, I'm not mixed up on that, so.
That's what I was gonna say, is mixing it, too.
Yes.
I just like them.
So, so, uh, there, there aren't really temporary baskets, they're just actual baskets, so, once they put them on city property, Craig, they're ours. If they, if they pay for a basket-
Who's there?
The volunteer group?
The group, they're there.
If they buy, well, actually, Austin, you should tell me the city was gonna buy them, they were gonna pay you.
They're gonna pay us, so they could use our, our municipality's, uh-
So it's a type of something?
Yeah, sales, that's it.
So in that case, it would be our baskets, right?
It would.
Okay. Uh, and I guess from the financial standpoint, zero cost to the city, how is it possible that it will be on city property, will be maintained as a common responsibility? So I guess, when I heard that motion initially, I felt like it was zero cost to the city on the installation, and once they're installed.
I think we would've meant more was materials, baskets, material, any material involved more than anything. And, and mostly labor, I mean, realistically, there's gonna be a way that the city involved-
It was more like we wanted the involvement of the city in advising on, yeah, be careful, don't do this, just to make sure we didn't run afoul of city staff.
But you believe that the ongoing maintenance was a cost to the city?
Well, yeah, I think we accepted that.
Yeah, 'cause it was considered extremely minimal.
We're not gonna require them to go down there and mow-
Because they were gonna-
Weed whip around those.
Well, Dale had said that if you put, if it went to concrete eventually, you'd put enough of a footing around it, there would be no weed eating, no string trimming, it would just, they'd just mow around it like they would any other, 'cause the deck would go over the concrete.
And so then the installation agreement, is the city going to enter into a written agreement with the disc golf group, and the installation, that could be built into the waiver form?
I mean, I guess it depends on what the purpose of that agreement was, for liability purposes, yes. Like for other-
Is it for-
Scope of installation, or, you know, those kind of things, and, I don't know, but waiver.
Is, is it, is it more than liability, you guys? Do you remember? This last one, this 18?
18 was about, the schools, you said, having an agreement to take care of the fielding, it sounded just like they do with high schools, with football.
It says, is the city going to enter into a written agreement with the disc golf group with the details of the installation of the temporary course? So I think that, don't you believe that the waiver could include whatever indemnity we need?
Whatever, as long as everybody in the agreement knows the answers to the question, yeah.
You think that's possible, Craig? You think the waiver form could be sufficient for that?
Again, I mean, if it's, if it's just to address-
Indemnity?
Some sort of indemnification or release of the city of any claim as a result of the installation of temporary, temporary course, yes. But, don't be on that. I mean, this is a, a larger agreement akin to what was entered into between the school district and the city, that's a big difference. But I don't know if that was what is being asked.
Madam Mayor, my, my thinking on this is kind of, are we wanting to make the school enter into some kind of agreement with us as far as them coming over and using the disc golf course for PE and stuff?
Yeah.
Do we have an agreement when they have their, their end-of-year kickbacks and everything down City Park, and they bring all the students down there for the afternoon?
Well, the key thing is, this is a-
Cause they're coming down there and using facilities down there all afternoon, we'd make them sign some kind of an agreement.
And there's after-school groups, et cetera, they use it.
Bible groups probably, do we have agreements with the churches that could go in and use it for stuff? I just think we open up a can of, I mean, what is an end, man? We gotta have agreements that they-
All it has to do is be added to this with the school board. We've already got the agreement.
That only covers the drainage area, though, correct?
Right.
For football.
Yeah. We have an agreement with them for the tennis courts, for the disc over there to use it. We do have an agreement with that.
And they're gonna hold classes that play disc golf, it's gotta be-
We do, but we never know they're there until after.
There's just a lot of disparate groups that use the park for various, meaning-
Cross-country runs through there, I believe, don't they?
Yeah, they do.
I don't know if we have a contract across the country.
I've heard there's little small groups that gather for yoga or all sorts of, I mean, it's kind of one of those, you just, it's hard to know who, whom all do.
Yeah.
I think that's probably why the negligent exemptions and things exist in statute, is because, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the legislature understands that it's really hard for cities to control a space like a park from people using it and coming and going and doing what they will.
Yeah, I mean, just to be a little more specific, it covers any claim related to the use of any public property intended or permitted to be used in a park, like our open area for recreational purposes. And that's to all government, so, you're talking about universities, open areas, yeah.
Well, if we have a hole through the drainage area, do we need to modify this?
I think it's a good idea to approach the school district about it, um, in their effect.
I've had two school district employees say that they thought this would be something they could use. The school might be interested in that, at any rate, being part of their agreement, and they could use it for PE or after-school programs, and it might be something.
We agree with that, what that, has specific provisions about specific uses of football, no equal football, it appears, um, what are uses that are prohibited, javelins, cause, um, this could just be added in the category, if this is, could be added.
So an amendment to include them then, as well as an amendment with Parker Matt on volunteer work, that they do up there near the park, is that what you wanted?
Well, I don't know that that would be contained in this agreement.
I need, yeah, it'd probably be something else, but, I mean, I think having some sort of waiver for volunteers doing anything on any city property, probably, in any official capacity, probably is a good idea.
I'm just trying to go back to that fourth grade class, that sort of thing. I'm just throwing it out there. So, so you don't want, just do a volunteer waiver, have not volunteer regarding the school? Is that the final answer?
It seems like something, except, outside of that, that might apply to the school as well, but, but not necessarily in the athletic use agreement.
Okay. Well, the school probably wouldn't be using any kind of dangerous tools, or, you know, they're using the park. When we're talking about volunteers performing some sort of act.
Ladders, or-
Yeah, ladders, like hanging, or using whatever tools.
And such a, a waiver, I'm sure other cities have that, it doesn't seem like it'd be the biggest thing to draft and put together, just kind of a whole harmless thing.
You know, we had all those guys help put those bleachers together at the, the field, you know, and those come in, so.
Sure. I mean, we definitely want people volunteering, and I don't wanna put up impediments to people volunteering, at all, but something simple to just sign off on, 'cause that puts people's minds at ease.
I think also, we might let us keep track of what volunteer works mean then, too. It's not a bad catch-up, where we know what's going on.
And we know who to thank.
Yeah. Okay, so, are you guys satisfied that we covered that adequately, based on what we need to do is talk to the school, Austin, about amending it to include the disc golf and drafting up a waiver form for volunteer work? Do you have anything else to say on regard to the admin finance meeting?
No, just, I mean, do we need to make a motion about the zero cost to the city? Or is that not gonna be an issue?
I, I understood it to mean, and I'm the one who added that on there, so I think I can speak to it a little. Um, I, I meant that in the sense that we wouldn't spend money on equipment, or hiring any crews or anything. The only, I guess you could call it indirect cost being just Dale advising, saying, hey, don't do this here, do this here, basically wasted, so it wouldn't cost us money down the line to mow around it or whatever. So, no cash caused, only, city's only role being advisory. But I don't know if we need a motion on that or not. I mean, it seems like I'm splitting an air.
There might be, I mean, they might need a little bit of city help if, um, I don't know, are they planning on moving any of the baskets at Lakeview?
Lakeview?
Cause I'm under the impression that they are like three foot down in fly ash or something like that.
They might have like a yard of concrete around them or something.
Yeah, they're gonna have to have, if they decide they're gonna move those particular spots-
That might require-
Or mix them in with new baskets at the park.
Right. They may have to come and ask for, if they need to, I, yeah, I don't know either, 'cause I haven't gone up there and experimented with it. Gina? If only there was a councilperson nearby to go over there with a shovel.
Good. Me and the boys, we'll go over there and figure that.
The boys will go at it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, do you think a motion needs to be made or not?
I, I don't, but if, I, because I know what I meant, but if the council feels like there needs to be, I, I will make a motion.
I'm reading through the minutes, I think it's pretty clear it's talking about installation, and you did specifically say about Austin, Dale being involved.
Yeah, I, I just, that was more on the, I don't want, you know, I wouldn't want anyone doing anything in the park without consulting us.
Yeah.
As far as putting anything in the ground at all.
You know, there's electrical that runs through there.
Right, and that would be the one call thing.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, um-
Dale pointed as her, or-
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, he was very-
Yeah, the one call wouldn't identify anything but the, like, specifically West Star's lines, so a lot of that is our stuff. Uh, and, um, yeah, we would, we would have to point that out.
Well, there's like the MCI line along the corridor and things like that.
And gas, too, because there is a state, so it's gas line.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, so we're gonna move on with that, no motion needed at this time. Um, we have one appointment and wait determination for a seasonal code enforcement, Butch Schmitz, at three, thirteen fifty an hour.
Move approved mayor's appointment of Butch Schmitz, a seasonal code enforcement for thirteen fifty an hour.
My second. Is there any discussion, except hallelujah? Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right.
How many hours is it gonna work?
It, like, it should get down to like, maybe two days a week, a half days, uh, once he gets learned, and of all the, of what's in the book, uh, he should be able to, once-
So, and you're starting at two days a week, is that what-
No, uh, we're gonna figure out, uh, it, we should get it down to two days a week, um, with not, well, I don't think full days at that point in time, once we get it down to that. First off, we're gonna start teaching them about the books and what's going on, and what logs, uh, we have on the books.
What, what's he starting at? How many days does he start that?
Um, at least a couple full days, uh, to see where, how much he can afford. It's not a set schedule yet, we're gonna see what happens.
Do, is there a ma, well, we know what maximum is, what, a thousand hours per year?
That's a part time, that's, that's one of the reasons we stuck with seasonal, which is-
There's no limitation?
There's not a limitation, if I'm right, yeah.
And, um, so you're beginning with two days, and just for him to learn the process and then?
Well, yeah, he'll learn the process, uh, learn the books, uh, and then after that, um, it's just getting him into checking and go, and, and knowing back and checking, and just learning what David normally does.
Yeah, I noticed that they have a great big long list that was in the packet, but most of it was weed notices, and I think most of us agreed we wanna get beyond the weed notices, right?
Yes.
We wanna get to the more like the property and things like that.
Structure and the trash around the facility, houses, junk cars and that type of stuff.
Yeah, the cars and stuff, and you know, the key thing is, if we need to amend our codebook, because there's things we, that aren't in there that we wanna be in there, we need to be, we need to focus on doing that.
Yes, such as, mayor, such as parking on the easements or right of ways, and-
So-
Parking machinery and vehicles and trash, and, but we don't have anything in our codebook that we address that.
Well, I think we have trash, don't we?
Codebooks are trash, yeah, there's trash in there.
What, what's the other one, vehicle on the front yard?
Vehicles and machinery.
What do you mean by machinery, out of curiosity?
Uh, just any kind of-
You took up equipment?
Yes.
Besides a mower?
Mm-hmm. Yes, there are places where, yes.
Besides something bigger than a mower?
There's like a tank that's parked, parked, that I see every day.
A tank?
That's in Landmark.
They also need to check backyard.
I don't know, a water tank, gas tank, I mean, is, it's not one-
Not a Sherman tank.
They need to check people's backyards, too, not just front yards.
Okay.
Well, are, are we a little bit limited on the fences thing on that?
If you can see it, usually, usually if you can see it from the road, that's what we report on. Um, we can't, I mean-
You can't go, you can't go-
Can't go, can't go on people's properties, and we, we don't, I mean, David doesn't always have the time to go through every alley.
Well, I know, but, but if the neighbors, the neighbors, the neighbors have to put up with it, and if they can see it, then-
Maybe Butch will have time to go through.
Yeah, well.
Butch will be a good guy.
I took, I took pictures, I took pictures of a couple places, so I can show it to you.
And there are also like our travel trailers that are parked on easements, and, and one RV parks in the front yard.
Yes, that's definitely 13th Street, blocked from me. And then out on North Street was one of the dogs, it was either on corner ninth, between ninth and tenth, it was like somebody exploded garbage, and then that little, oh, it's awful, it's awful.
That's a bright image.
Yeah, so.
Oh, trash, probably was rats and stuff, right? I think they should address trash.
That's what the front yard is, too.
So, all right, so we'll get him working?
Well.
Craig?
Nothing.
We do have an executive session.
Who wants to read it?
Who wants to read it?
Kevin, let's get started.
Mayor, city attorney, and how long?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes? Who's gonna read it?
Kevin.
Kevin, you.
I move the city council recessed an executive session to discuss possible acquisition of real estate pursuant to the acquisition of real estate exception, KSA 75, 4319, B6. This session will include the mayor, city administrator, and city attorney, lasting fifteen minutes.
So it's ten, ten eighteen? So make it ten thirty-five?
Let's go ten thirty-five.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor say aye.
Yeah.
Read all of it.
All read it.
Yes. Yep, yep, yep.
You were in there.
Now, we didn't want to go and wake his mother.
All right, we will reconvene, there is no binding decisions made during the executive session. And I just wanted to talk briefly about the last meeting, and, you know, I know that Gina talked to Kyle about those tippery baskets that Sunday before the meeting, and I guess my question was, Jason, were you aware of that?
I had not talked to Gina, because she called, she tried to insinuate that I had been in contact with Gina, and I don't talk, I don't associate with Gina. There's a couple other people. I mean, no offense, I mean, I've not in a bad way, I'm just saying, we're not on, like, calling each other at home. I was kind of upset when that got thrown out at me, because I had not contacted Gina.
But had you talked to Kyle?
I talked to Kyle, but I don't think that I'm prohibited from contacting Kyle that I know of.
Did Kyle communicate to you what Gina said?
No. He did not.
So that Monday night, you weren't aware that Gina had made that?
No, this is how uncoordinated we were, that I had a motion written up, and then Todd made a motion.
Yeah, steal my motion.
And I'm going, you stole my thunder, and I was gonna make a motion, and, yeah.
So, so if you weren't aware of that, did you know that Kevin was okay? Had you talked to Kevin about disc golf at all?
Some of us had talked with each other, but we hadn't talked to the other, we didn't want to break comas, so we only talked to so many.
And did you talk to Diane?
Diane called me, I did not reach out to Diane.
And so, so you had talked to Kevin, and you had talked to Diane, and you knew Todd and Bobby were all...
Uh, no, I didn't know.
On Facebook, because they were all saying yes on Facebook.
Not about that.
I very specifically have neither followed nor commented, nor anything on anything to do.
We're not even Facebook friends.
And I don't Facebook friend, I avoid it, because I know how that's a silver slope, and I didn't want to accidentally break coma.
Well, I thought we had, I had emails where you said on Facebook that you were for it, and I know you said you had Facebook that you were for it.
No, I put a like on it, is what I did.
People tagged me and things, but I've said nothing. I have not publicly declared it on Facebook.
No, what I put on Facebook is when Mert Ott came into my place of business and started trying to strong-arm me into voting, then not voting. He said, "Just, you know, don't vote, just do a pass on it," and then he had this whole thing worked out, where if you don't vote, or you abstain, then this could happen, this could happen, and the mayor can vote, and then this could happen, and this could happen, and I said, "And what reason would I use abstain, Mert?" And he said, "Well, just tell him that you couldn't make it, your mind up, and you just couldn't make a decision." And I said, "There is nobody, if it ever knows me, that will tell you I can't make my mind up, or will not speak my mind." And I didn't appreciate him coming in my place and trying to represent, I don't know, what group, or whoever, or was in his head, that that happened.
Well, we, you know, we, no one can control what another person does.
I realize that.
And so, but, you know, I just want you guys to be totally aware of coma concerns. A lot of you guys are brand new to council, and if you talk to Kevin about it, and you talk to Diane about it, and you talk to Todd about it, and you talk to Bobby about it...
And you're saying you didn't talk to anybody about it at all?
Well, I'm the mayor.
Because I've, so it's okay if you talk to everybody about it? But it's not okay if I talk to anybody about it?
Well, you have to understand...
Actually, the mayor gets in more trouble, because if you talk to four people and the mayor, then you're in trouble, I can talk to three and not violate it, because it has to be more than four people.
As long as you don't call each of us and have the same conversation, because that's a chain link.
No, but if you talk, so, but I'm really focusing on a serial meeting. If there's a serial meeting. And that's when you, that's when you talk to the majority of the membership about a common topic that would, that's business of the council.
I went out of my way to make sure that I was not violating coma.
So, but...
Because I didn't reach out to any of the other four people, because I did not want in any way worry about breaking coma laws.
So, so you said you...
Barely ever talked to Todd, I mostly talked to Bobby.
So you talked, so you and Bobby, and you talked to Kevin, and you talked to Diane, but you did not talk to Todd?
I didn't know, I didn't know for sure where Kevin stood on it, really. Or Todd, I mean, like I say, I wasn't coordinating with Todd, because Todd had a motion of his own that he had written up.
Yeah, I talked to you, you called me, but I, we didn't talk about that.
But didn't Todd, in the article in the newspaper, was all about pro-disc golf?
Well, but I, but I, I can't, I mean, all of us read that, so technically we're all in violation of coma, then I guess, I don't know, I mean, I can't stop people from...
I've never, I've not reached out to anyone about it, like I said, I've specifically distanced myself from any risk of serial meetings, because I'm aware of that.
Craig, do you want to go over that? The key thing is that we want to make sure when, when you come to the council meeting, that I, I as mayor can ask Darlene how she, I can ask every single one of you how you are gonna vote, but I cannot communicate to the others what the others feel. Like, I can ask Darlene, "How are you gonna vote?", I can ask Bobby, I can ask Gina, I can ask Terry, I can ask every single one. But if I communicate and say, "Hey, Jason's voting this way, how do you feel, Kev?", that's wrong. I can't do that. But I as mayor can, so it is different between the mayor and the council for a serial meeting. It's right here.
And that's not what I was doing. I was hopeful, if I threw a motion out there, that we would kind of compromise, and maybe we would get a couple other people to go for it, that's what I was hoping for.
But you had talked to Kevin about it.
I was not sure how Kevin was gonna vote on that.
But you had talked to Kevin about disc golf.
It's not like I asked Kevin, "Hey, are you in favor of this or not?"
But you had talked to him about disc golf.
Well, we've all talked about disc golf ad nauseam for months. I mean, if you've been at a council meeting, you should pretty much have an idea of everywhere everybody stands at this point on disc golf. I don't think I'd need to call everybody up and ask individually where they stand, it's pretty apparent where everybody is on disc golf at this point. It's not like an issue that we haven't discussed at length for weeks. My sense was that if I threw something out there and compromised a little bit, that some people would come on board, was what I was...
And that was the same sense I had.
Yeah, you had the same...
We didn't communicate, because, no, it's kind of funny, I didn't know you were thinking the same thing.
Well, just the way it went down, it sent, the hardest part for Darlene, and I believe, was that the ad hoc committee had a recommendation, and you circumvented that.
It was quite apparent after a few of those ad hoc meetings, that the ad hoc committee was, main purpose was to do anything they could to keep that from going into city park. That's my, that's my opinion of it.
No, it was, my position was that we study it carefully, because it's a, it's, you know, putting it in city park where there's so much activity and no open space...
To my eye, and this is what a lot of people expressed to me, was that we were spending a lot more time and attention on this than any number of other seemingly similar things that have come before us, you know, from whether it's archery at Lakeview, no offense to anyone in the room, or anything else, which is kind of like, "Oh, okay, well, done before her, it's probably all right, you're saying this is cool, yep, we say okay, and we move on." So, it seemed like this was getting undue roadblocks. That is the impression people got, and that's what they expressed to me.
Well, I think that when Kyle made that comment last meeting, that he felt like the issue was that the ad hoc committee took him out of the picture, we asked him to come back to a revised plan on the 14th, he didn't bring one back on the 28th.
But we sent it to an ad hoc meeting, we were talking about finding designers, as I remember.
No, we didn't, Jason, Jason, we didn't set up the ad hoc committee until June 11th. We didn't set up an ad hoc committee until June 11th, we gave him four weeks to bring a revised plan to the council. So I just want to clarify that.
No, we sent it out to ad hoc, the second meeting.
No, June 11th, we set up the ad hoc committee.
I was thinking, he came in front of us, and then we had the Parks and Rec thing down there.
On the 28th.
And then, and then we had another meeting, was that the one where you set up the ad hoc?
June 11th.
Then we had the, he had the thing down the park.
Just the sequ, I just want to point out, the sequence of events was, he was supposed to bring, it was tabled for a revised plan, the next meeting was, that was when the committee went and looked to the city park, and then it wasn't until June 11th that we set up the ad hoc committee, but we had that, five weeks we had to have a revised plan come, so...
I would assume that he was under the impression that he didn't need to submit his revised plan when we were talking about finding designers, I mean, if I was, and that's what I was saying.
Carl had asked him at both of those meetings if he had a revised plan. He put some more copies of other disc courses in the packet, but he said no.
He put more information, yeah, he had put information in several of the packs.
Well, anyway, I would really encourage everybody who hasn't taken coma training to take the coma training in August, so that everyone is well aware of serial meetings. You know, that is the risk of Facebook, is that you can create a serial meeting without meaning to.
I think everybody has these, correct? I have one in my pamphlet, I don't know if I got it at LKM Training or what, but it's a nice little handy reference guide, it's got all the basics of coma, I mean, it's not exhaustive by any means.
I have one.
You do? But I mean, whenever I have a question whether something's quite on point, it's a good little reference. Yeah, I believe, this is provided by Derek Schmidt, the Attorney General, but I'm pretty sure I got it from somebody with the league.
But I think, I just want to make the point, the five new people, that the city government is totally different than any other organization, and that all discussions about city business has to be in front of everyone, and it's in your best interest to have those discussions in an open setting, and not to have them individually, because you can create a serial meeting without doing it. And again, if you haven't had coma training, I really encourage you, the league is having three in August, and I think you need to make sure you go, so you're aware of it. With that being said, I'm gonna go ahead with my roundtable now. Proclamation to the Shrine Bowl, and it says, "Whereas the Shrine Bowl of Kansas Inc., sponsored by the five shrine centers of Kansas, namely Abdullah of the Olin Park, Arab of Topeka Isis of Salina, Midian of Wichita, and Merza of Pittsburgh, will sponsor their 45th Annual All-Star Football Game on July 28th, 2018 in Pittsburgh, Kansas, and continue their tradition of philanthropy, and whereas over 90 years, the ancient Arabic order of the Nobles of the Mystic Shrine of North America through its network of hospitals, has treated over 865,000 children with orthopedic disabilities in more recent years, treated thousands of severely burned children through its Gorge Institute, and whereas the citizens of the great state of Kansas may aid this worthy and impartial work, and further the efforts of this great charity in its support of this philanthropic event to favor the unfortunate children regardless of race and creed, whereas Marysville High School senior quarterback Jack Blumer will be participating in the Kansas All-Star Football Shrine Bowl Day Event, representing the Marysville Bulldogs, now therefore I, Cardinal Grand Mayor of the City of Marysville, do proclaim July 28th, 2018 as Jack Blumer Day, in honor of his achievements and participation in the Shrine Bowl, and urge all citizens to join in this observance." And the last thing I want to say is, I didn't mean to throw you under the bus on the, but you do send the calls out, so there's no one else to say in the future, list what the meeting is about, except to tell you. All right, Darlene?
Speaking about the Shriners, and there's a Shriners Hospital in St. Louis that deals with children, and my niece, Michelle, went there many times, they did not charge her, she had, she has brittle bone disease, and many, many breaks from the time she was like a year on, year old on, so they do do a good service. And then also, back to the disco, I am particularly in favor of disco, I just want us to do it in a safe place for all concerned.
I agree, I concur. Bobby?
I was walking my dogs today, and we walked from my house down the Seventh Street corridor, and we cross over, and that little sidewalk, in that little park next to my building downtown.
Oh, yeah, the Pony, Spatula Park?
Anyway, someone had taken a bottle, and had broke it right on the sidewalk, and it got in the grass, and underneath, and I'm kind of getting that little caretaker of that park over there, and I assume it was a late-night drinker, you know, so you know what, they used to go up and down Broadway and shake our doors and make sure everything was fine?
Are you down to the policeman?
Yeah, are they doing that at all anymore?
Not that I know of, are they doing that, just checking doors?
It was just kind of a courtesy thing, couple, you know, to go see, and if there's something that has been dumped, or if something's going on on Broadway, or left there, you know? But yeah, you know, because I was really, wasn't so mad, I mean, the dogs could have walked over and hugged the paws, and then we would have been to the bed. But little kids go in that park, people eat lunch there, it was just, it just, I had that one that just really got under my skin, that was a beef I had, you know, people just taking those glass bottles and smashing them just for the, no care of it. So I just thought if they would, if they would, I'm not asking to clean it up there, but you know, sometimes a little more presence causes avoidance of certain things.
Oh, I see what you're saying, that they know somebody's walking up and down the street?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll see you to check that out. Gina? Terry?
No.
Todd?
Yeah, just a positive comment, I had a citizen, well, not citizen, from the county, somebody out of town, say today that they came in this morning for their coffee, and that they had a police officer driving by who pulled down their hood, and said, "Hi, good day" to him, just waved, just nice friendly little hello, and they said that, well, they just thought that was just the most Mayberry thing in the world, and thought it was, it was great, how friendly.
Did we get their name?
No, but I thought, that's really cool, and she said that that was just, kind of made her whole day, that thought that was neat, and just that little interaction, so I guess it goes to show, you know, the littlest things can have a big impact on people.
A small act of kindness can go a great way. Okay, Diane?
I don't have anything.
Kevin?
Nope, not this evening.
Jason? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.